Can we please have a roll call?
Director Tremblay.
President.
Director Kildy.
Here.
Director Craven.
Here.
Secretary Santangelo.
Here.
Chairman Mulchey.
Present. Mrs. Craven, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
Tremblay, please rise, put your hand over your heart and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
Do we have any public comments? Would anyone at this time like to address the Camrio Sanitary District? Seeing no one rush up, we're going to move on to the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. I have no items for departmental. I have no items for legal. Do I have any comments from staff?
No comments.
No comments. And any comments from board members at this time? No. At this point, we're going to recess. We do, we are going to reconvene in the administrative conference room for a study session jointly with the Camrio or City Council. So I'm going to recess at this time.
I'd like to call the Camrio Successor Agency Special Meeting for April 24th. The order, please, and let the record reflect that all the council members are present. Amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
Public comments for the Camrio Successor Agency? Moves this down to item three. It's the consent calendar, which I believe is just a minute's.
A second?
Yes, right, yeah. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Hearing none, please vote.
That passes unanimously. Departmental, any comments from staff tonight? None? Any comments from board members tonight? Hearing none, we'll adjourn this meeting. With that, I'd like to call the regular Camrio City Council meeting for April 24th. The order, please, and let the record reflect that all the council members are present. That gets us down to item one. It's amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments?
No amendments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that gets us down to two. There's no presentations tonight, so it gets us down to three, which is a consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on consent calendar? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, so that's going to get us down to item four at City Council. The first is the City Committee Appointment Amendment. Do we have a staff report? Ms. Madeline, do you want to take that?
A very brief one. This is a request from Councilmember Craven to have some new appointments made to two positions, the Camrio Airport Authority and the Ventura County Transportation Commission. And I'll defer to Charlotte if she wants to make any comments. But the amended list was provided in your packet with the recommended appointees, and I believe there may be a change to that also.
Yes, I'd like, go ahead, Ms.
Well, I was just going to say that I did have quite a few more committee assignments than I think the rest of you did. And frankly, I'm overwhelmed. If you'll look at this one, this list, I attended one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight committee meetings in the last two weeks.
When did you sleep?
Yeah, and there have been some pretty big packets for a good many of those. And that doesn't count the City Council meetings or the other ones. So I've, in the last three months, I've just come to realize I couldn't handle that many committees. So I appreciate whoever will take the VCTC and the Airport Authority.
Okay, also, I have a comment on the Airport Authority. Ms. Santangelo is the current alternate, and my recommendation is that we move her up. And I will slide into her seat as the alternate on the Airport Authority, if that is agreeable.
If I may, I just want to say, Charlotte, for the brief time it was serving on the Airport Authority, it was very pleasant.
Well, we had, in what, three months, we had four or five meetings?
Okay, so there is a suggested action. Somebody like to make a motion on that?
I'll move. Sorry, I'll move the motion that we amend appointments and appoint Mrs. Santangelo to the Airport Authority and Mr. Tony Tremblay to the Ventura County Transportation Commission.
And I believe you might want to consider putting me as the.
Oh, and Mayor Kildy as the alternate on the Airport Authority.
I'll second that.
Second on that. Is there any further discussion on this particular item?
Please vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that gets down to item B. It's the Camrio Ranch Operating Agreement Ad-Hoc Committee. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes. So first of all, I want to make sure that you're all looking at the revised report, which was distributed to you via red folder. This item is, at the request of the Camrio Ranch Foundation, they submitted a letter to the city asking that the city form an ad hoc committee to discuss the future of the operating agreement between the city and the Camrio Ranch. The city does have a policy that allows the mayor to appoint an ad hoc committee, and then that item is brought back to the City Council for ratification. So the mayor did appoint two members, Charlotte Craven and Sean Mulchey. And the item before you is to ratify the formation of the ad hoc committee as formed by the mayor. And I do have a comment card.
Okay. First of all, is there any questions on this with staff? Okay, we have a comment card. Let me grab this. We have Matt Lorimer. Let me pass out this second, Matt. Let me pass this out there, Mr. Secondor, Matt. Okay. Let me make sure it's on. Yeah, it's on. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Matt Lorimer.
Is it on?
The issues that are in front of you are during the Camrio Ranch Foundation, the Camrio Ranch House. In front of you, you have two documents. The first one says out of control. I asked for this document, and I don't know why the city manager, he's been here for a number of years, starting 2014, we spent $118,000, $122,000, $129,000, $133,000, $137,000. We're looking at 208. So basically, the cost for the city has gone through the roof, basically. And why? I haven't seen anything. When I suggested this and I asked for this thing, it's a trending, we call it a trending report, and it's not good. The city has spent continuously from 14 to 19, more and more money in its, at the city level, and I want to know why. And I've asked for a follow-up and a detail on that. But I don't know why the city manager makes $300,000, couldn't come up with a report like this, and why the City Council wasn't aware of this. But it needs to be addressed. The next thing I want to talk about is the Camrio Ranch. You know, we had an ad hoc meeting there. In front of you, you have a copy where labor was $477,381. You also have a copy of page 47, and in there, it says, "Command Performance shall conduct the meetings with the people who rent the place. They'll do the cleaning. They'll do the teardown. They'll do the deposits." So the question is, why does the CRF spend $477,381? What are they doing with their time? You guys are elected officials. This is unacceptable. They don't pay rent. So this is their own documentation they submitted. And let me remind you what happened yesterday. Devin, who's the president, one of the councilmen, asked, "How many people do you have?" "I don't know." He turned to his staff. "I don't know how many people. I don't know how much money we've saved." How does a person who claims to be a representative and has skill level to run two organizations or his own private business not have an idea of how to read them P and L? You've not controlled any labor costs. Almost a million dollars went through that ranch, and almost half of it went into labor, and he has no idea. What did they do with their time? And by the way, the board came and said, "We have no time. We're so busy." If Command Performance does the cleanup, the setup, the teardown, everything else, what does the CRF board do with its time? Nothing. They don't deal with education. They don't deal with any, they showed up and basically had no game plan for the City Council or this community. Why have they been wasting tax dollars? They don't get charged rent. It's unacceptable. It's time to close the organization down. It's time to put it out to bid and allow somebody in who knows what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do you not have any other blue cards? Okay, so is there any questions of staff on this?
I would move the approval.
I'll second that, but then I want to ask a question.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Tremblay?
I didn't realize it was a question.
Have you microphone on? Yeah.
There, it would help if I turn on the mic. So this matter, just a question of clarification to Mr. Pirik. This item tonight is limited to consideration of appointment of the ad hoc committee. And I take it that council is, tonight anyway, is limited to just that action as described in the agenda, correct, in pursuit of the Brown Act?
Yeah, the item is as described in the agenda to address the appointment of the ad hoc committee. And that's the, what the agenda report says, and that's what the agenda says.
Well, we received an email earlier, or emails earlier today suggesting that we take other actions with regard to the CRF. And I guess my inquiry is whether or not that's even permissible under the Brown Act, given this agenda description.
It would not be.
Okay. That concludes my questions.
Okay. There's a motion on the table and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, that gets us down to Public Works. It's the Landscape Maintenance District Resolution Preliminary Approval for the Engineers Report. Mr. Consul, or, oh, I'm sorry. You have the microphone? Okay.
Yeah, Lindy Moore will give this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Here we are again.
Speak into the mic.
Here we are again, talking about the Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts. So this is an annual process. I just wanted to really make sure that you all know that it is just, it's our annual process. It's somewhat of a housekeeping item, but I'm going to go through similar items that we talked about a couple of weeks ago in study session. So talking about the Landscape Maintenance Districts, and I'm specifically talking about the nine special districts. We have this annual process, and throughout the course of the year and this time of year, staff is looking at the required maintenance to maintain these nine special zones, the costs, the improvements, the revenue, and maintaining a fund balance. The next step in the process is what is before you this evening, which is a resolution. And we're asking council to approve a resolution with the intent to levy the assessments for next tax year and also approve the preliminary engineers report. And I want to emphasize preliminary. There's a few minor modifications you'll see between the preliminary and then the final in a couple of weeks. And then we also are asking you to set a public hearing date, which is going to be June 12th this year. We're asking, we'll be asking council to approve a resolution at that point, authorizing the levy moving forward and approving the final engineers report. And this is all in anticipation of meeting the county assessor's deadline of July 5th, reporting for next tax year. So we are specifically talking about our nine special districts here. So we've got them sprinkled about the city, which you've seen this before. We've got expenditures in total of $262,000, and we've got revenues of about $220,000. And the reason for that gap is a few years ago, council reduced the reserve requirement or the reserve goal for these particular funds from 50% down to 20%. So we're able to utilize some fund balances and bring these funds into compliance or into, within the goal anyways. So this year, we are requesting or for Zone 7 and 9, we are going to be increasing the assessment for those two zones for this fiscal, for this next fiscal year. So I've got this table, which has an awful lot of information on it. Most of this, all of this information is in your engineers' report somewhere, but I wanted to highlight a couple of items. One is, of our nine zones, three of the zones do not have an annual escalator. And the annual escalator refers to the maximum allowable by law without going out to a Prop 218 vote. And these were all, the escalators were created when the zones were created in the initial formation documents of these zones. So the maximum allowable, you can see up on the screen, on the ones that we are allowed to increase, we've got 3% over here, and then we've got the CPI over here. And so here's last year's maximum, and here's next year's maximum. So the levy, we do not need to, and we don't need to assess up to the maximum. We can assess up to the maximum, but we don't. So you can see that the maximum for 18, 19 was down here, or the allowable is up here. And here's what we ended up levying. We didn't hit the maximum. And that is based on the needs of maintaining the zones. So for our proposed 18, or 19, 20, we're just requesting an increase for Zone 7 and Zone 9, so only two of them. And we would be going up to the maximum allowable on those two zones. And then I wanted to highlight for those specific zones. So Zone 7, we have revenues of $7,800, and we have expenditures of almost $13,000. We don't have the adequate fund balance moving forward. We have adequate fund balance now, but when we look at these over, we look at these over a period of five years, five years in advance, and make sure that the fund remains within compliance. And the same thing with Zone 9 over here. So that is my conclusion on the nine special districts. And I would now, oh, I'm sorry, it's not. And then I've got a tax bill. So you're familiar with this tax bill. Here's a Ventura County tax bill. Up on the top portion, we've got our Prop 213 maximum, and then we've got all of the bonds down below here. On the bottom section is where you would see these nine special zones appear on a tax bill. So that concludes my discussion on the zones.
But let me just clarify one thing on the tax bill. On that tax bill, there would, or on any other tax bill, there'd only be one zone.
There would only be.
Not nine zones. Just for anybody listening, I think they may have misunderstood.
Yes, so only one zone. You only fall in one zone unless, of course, you have property in other zones, and you'd see a separate property tax bill for that. And again, this is, the assessments that I spoke about on the prior page, these are annual assessments, not monthly. It's an annual assessment. So now I'd like to talk a little bit about how lighting and landscape is funded throughout the rest of the city. So we have our homeowners associations. We have Mission Oaks, MD 1A, which was formed when Mission Oaks was starting to develop. And then we've got our Citywide Lighting and Landscape District, which was created in about the mid-'60s when the city incorporated. So HOAs, I'm sure many of you are familiar, but we've got, you know, it's privately maintained, privately funded. City doesn't get involved in this at all. Then we've got our Mission Oaks, which is in the east end of town. We've got annual expenditures this year, this year of 1.1 million. We have revenue of about .8 million. And we've got, so the difference between those two comes from the fund balance. We've got a couple of capital projects. We've been accumulating a fund balance here, so we've identified a couple of capital projects that can utilize that fund balance and bring it down, but that's for the current year. And then we've got our Citywide Lighting and Landscape District, which is conceivably the entire city. It's, the folks who are in the yellow are contributing, and now this is not a special assessment. This is a portion of their 1% sales tax, the ad valorem sales tax.
Property.
Sorry.
You're just putting us to test tonight.
You're putting me to the test, too. So expenditures of $4.5 million, revenues of about $2 million, and a general fund transfer of about $2.5 million. So we've got some controlling legislation in place, state of California, that prohibits us from reshuffling that 1% of sales tax. So we've got Prop 13, which was in 1978, which limits basically how much we can, how much the state of California can increase, increase the property tax. Then we've got SB 124, AB 8, and then, of course, Prop 218, which really limits how we can increase and create new taxes. So I just want to recap real quick then what the next steps are. It's the resolution in front of you this evening, and we'll be setting a public hearing date of June 12th. June 12th comes, you approve the final engineers' report and authorizing the levy for next tax year, all in preparation of meeting our deadline to the county assessor's office of July 5th for getting on the tax roll for next year. So that concludes my presentation. If anybody has any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Tremblay?
So we've got, we've got fund balances in numbers 7 and 9 respectively that are upside down. How would you characterize, well, upside down in the sense that they're, that the expenditures are greater than the revenues going in, and we've had to supplement by transfers from the general fund? How would you characterize, oh, I'm sorry.
No, we do not subsidize.
I misspoke. Right, I understand. But we still have an upside-down situation?
We don't have an upside-down situation yet.
Well, but, well, we will. Unless, unless, unless there's a greater assessment in 7 and 9, those fund balances are in essence upside down.
The fund balances are not upside down as of yet.
Can you go back to the?
If I can interject real quick, as far as upside-down meaning expenditures exceed revenues?
Yeah.
The pure revenue based on the levies that are being assessed?
Understand, that's all I meant. I wasn't trying to characterize it in any other way. But what I was getting to, here's what I wanted to ask is, can you characterize the level of service in the areas covering numbers 7 and 9 for the last three, four years? Have they been pretty static in terms of level of service?
They have. Zone 7 is a, it's a basin, so there's not a whole lot of routine, I mean, it's routine cleaning of the basin.
Okay.
Zone 9, there has, it's been pretty static for quite a few years. In, about five years ago, the level of service dropped because we had, we didn't have the revenue. We did an annexation. We did a Prop 218 in, I think it was fiscal year 13, 14, which annexed about, I think about 60 or 70 parcels into it. So we had more revenue, so the service level has been brought up.
Okay, so, but we're seeing, unless you, we do this sort of course correction, I don't know if I want to characterize it that way, but unless we take the suggested action, you potentially could see a deterioration in service levels?
We hope not.
Well.
That's correct.
You could see a potential deterioration.
You could. And really, what, and as Lindy mentioned, it's a five-year forecasting that we look at. Each year that we bring this forward, we're also looking at the forecast five years out of the trend of cost of service, you know, the expenditures with some increase there, just general, general additional costs. And then the other element that's in play here is that reserve balance that has grown because the goal has changed from 50% to 20%. So additional fund balance is there to cover the upside-downness, if you will, right, the differential. And looking out ahead, and you know, we do that, looking out five, even five-plus years, the need to increase 7 and 9 now is there so that we maintain that.
You maintain at least?
Fund balance, at least out, in the out-years. We may have to look at reduction in services, if necessary, to still meet that goal.
Right.
And again, that depends on actual expenditures that we look at and the forecasted expenditures.
Right, so that's the judgment call relative to, on the one hand, we have a potential deterioration in service versus.
Correct.
The fund level. So just one other question, that is, on the Will Dan Report on page 3 of 17, big page 14, and I think you talked about this a couple of minutes ago. It says, and I quote, "The proposed assessment rates outlined in this report are less than or equal to the maximum assessment rate previously approved for each of the various zones within the district. With regard to 7 and 9 respectively, it would be equal to what has already been approved in any event, as a maximum cap, correct?"
Yes.
So we're not seeking to send anything beyond the maximum cap?
No, no.
Okay, that's it for my questions. Thanks.
Any other questions for anybody? Sean?
For Zones 7 and 9 respectfully, Zone 7, what we're, what we're essentially proposing is an increase annual levy of $25, my math, $25.42. For Zone 9, $27.25. When I do the math, we're still, we'll still have a, I use the word upside-down, we're still going to have an annual negative operating balance in those, in those account. So in the long term, it doesn't, I mean, we're getting closer to zero or closer to even. We're still going to be falling behind. What is our, looking forward, what is our longer range? I mean, outside of reduction, I guess reduction of service has been floated and discussed.
And that would be an option. I mean, we don't have, we're levying to the maximum amount, so one side of the equation has to move, and we can't levy higher than, so it would be a level of service moving out. We still have some fund balances. We have some time to look at different strategies for possibly reducing or, and maybe not impacting significantly the level of service. Maybe we, maybe we, you know, and we're looking at these on a regular basis. Maybe we weed every couple of weeks versus every week. Maybe we water every, maybe we replace plants and put low, you know, drought tolerant or something. So yes, you are correct. I mean, we may see a change in the level of service over a period of time.
And then of the nine zones, I'm looking at big page 27, of the nine zones that we have in the city of Camrio, six of them, in addition to the two that we're talking about, Zone 7 and 9, four of them, six total have a negative, what I'll call a negative annual operating fund balance, whatever. What, let's see, two of those don't have escalators, one of which we've already hit the max, the other of which there is, there's movement there. And then the other ones, we also have it levied, you know, we still have, we still have room between where we're at and the max permissible levy there. Why aren't we doing anything in regards to those?
Because those have, those have a fund balance far exceeding the 50%. So we're trying to bring them down to 50% or even less. About a year ago, council, council made the decision that these particular, these nine funds had a 20% reserve goal versus 50%. They were creeping up a little bit higher even before that. So we're drawing down on the fund balances. So you would probably expect to see in the next five years or so, some of these zones getting increases, that we have the ability to do so.
As those zones fund balances, the reserve decreases. Yeah, goes below that threshold. So what we're essentially doing is we're comfortable, I honestly disagree with it, we're comfortable with drawing on the reserves for those respective zones. So that way, we can further put off people's, residents' out-of-pocket expense until we hit that certain threshold, that, is it 50%?
It's 20%.
Or, sorry, it was 50%, now it's 20%. So once we, once the fund, the reserve balance for that, any respective zone decreases below the threshold of 20%, then we look at it as potentially starting to increase that levy within the allowable limit.
That's correct. And we begin looking at it before it's upon us.
Okay.
We're like, like Dave mentioned, we're looking at these over a five-year period, maybe even seven years, and trying to sort of level the increases. So we don't see this spike, and then, oh, we've got too much now. But it's a balancing act. It really is.
Okay.
And I do, did want to bring your attention to Zone 9, or I'm sorry, Zone 3 particularly. We have no escalator, and we have very little fund balance. So that particular zone, we may be thinking about a significant reduction in service if need be, or Prop 218 potentially, to ask for an escalator there.
Okay. Sean, are you, anything else?
I think I'm good.
Are you good? Mr. Tremblay?
Yeah. One comment and one, no, two comments, actually. One is, right, last year, it appeared. One is, right, last year, it appeared to the council, prior council, that the reserve, setting the reserves at, at 20% as opposed to 50% was, was a, a better move and a more appropriate move fiscally. But really, the only option, and for example, with respect to zone three, the only other option other than a reduction in service is to go back out, and I'm not advocating it, is, but is to go back out on a 218, on a, on a new 218 assessment. That's really the only two moves that the city has, or two options that the city has, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll, if it's, if it's appropriate to make the motion at this point, I'm happy to do so, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, who would be?
I'll move the suggested action.
Second.
Some motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Uh, that passes unanimously. Uh, that gets us down to the Springville Interchange Landscape retrofit of a contract. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this item here tonight is to consider the award of a contract for the Springville Interchange Landscape retrofit project. And this project is located right in the middle of the interchange out there at Springville on the US 101. When this project was built, it included enhanced landscaping at the interchange, and the, um, maintenance of that landscaping is performed by the city by contract services under a landscape maintenance agreement with Caltrans. And the project is to enhance the original landscaping out there, primarily because of the highly compacted soils necessary for the construction of the bridge and the roadway and the improvements out there. Some of the landscaping has suffered, and we haven't had quite the desirable coverage, especially on the slopes. And there is also relatively high water table and really flat areas, you can see in this lower picture, where drainage isn't the best for trees. So the project is in include, will include planting 60 bougainvillea shrubs to increase coverage on the slopes. We'll also be planting 35 trees, replacing those that have been lost to high groundwater and poor drainage conditions. The tree types that we'll be planting in are more resistant to those conditions, so we expect better survival rate for those trees. And the project also includes replacing quite a few overhead spray irrigation nozzles with drip irrigation, specifically on the slopes. This will reduce the amount of overall water use. And then we'll also be implementing a liquid fertilizer system, and this will get the fertilized in the water right to the roots to do, um, to do the best job as possible, and also reducing the cost of the manual fertilization of the plants. We've had good success with these systems at other locations of, uh, city landscaping, so we'll implement that here. And we'll also be including water flow sensors within the irrigation system, and this more efficiently controls the amount of water that's getting out to the landscaping, and again, further reduction in water use. Another shot of one of the slope areas out there, you can see the, the project will include, include additional bougainvillea plants here that'll thrive better and produce better coverage on those slopes. So the steps that we've taken so far, last time we were counsel with authority to bid, we put the project out to bid, received two bids, and the lowest bid was received from Venco Western, a landscaping company. And a summary of the construction cost for the project is the contract with Venco West, Western, in front of you, denied at $106,202. The authorization that we're asking for, from council, is to include a 50% contingency for unforeseen additional costs, if necessary. Construction management and inspection costs estimated a little over $28,000, with the total construction cost of just over $150,000. The available funds in the current fiscal year budget are Camrio corridor funds, and right now, that fund balance is $104,260, requiring an additional appropriation out of that Camrio corridor fund balance, which is available, an appropriation of $46,000. Construction is anticipated upon award tonight. Takes a month or so to get all the contract documents in place, and the contractor mobilized and out there. We're projecting in the May, uh, May timeframe, possibly into June, to get started, and then a month or two projects into early summer with, with completion in summertime. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll open it up to council. I have a couple of questions first. Now, will the contract include the purchase price of the, of the material as well?
Correct.
Okay. And the bougainvillea, and maybe that's what we want, but they do grow quite fast, so there'll be some maintenance on cutting it back and pruning it and whatnot, too.
That's what's out there now. It's, the original plan had bougainvillea to cover the entire slopes, so yes, there is, um, regular maintenance that occurs on, on trimming and, and keep, keeping the landscaping looking good.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I just have a comment.
Mrs. Graven?
I, I think we've planted bougainvillas in a whole lot of inappropriate places. I think this is one of the appropriate places for it, because it can grow and spread, and it's not going to bother anybody like it does in medians.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Have to get my licks in.
They do grow, yeah. But we like bougainvillas, right? Our city flower. Okay. Anyhow, any other comments?
I'll move the approval.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, it gets down to city manager, the Camrio Tourism Marketing District. Do we have a staff report on that? Tully?
Yes, we do. The item in front of you this evening is consideration of a resolution to begin the process for the renewal of the Camrio Tourism Marketing District. The district was initially formed in 2014, and resulting from that was the establishment of the Camrio Hotel and Tourism Association. And really, what the district is, is a benefit assessment district that funds and mark, that provides the funding for marketing and promotional programs to increase tourism and hotel stays And the, uh, the CHTA, there are lots of acronyms on this one, coordinates and marketing efforts in, in conjunction with the Ventura County Lodging Association, which was established in 2011, and really, it's more countywide, including Camrio, Port Roneimi, Oxnard, and Ventura. And the approach that they've used successfully has improved tourism, as well as increased hotel stays in this area. And your report indicates the increase of, in revenues of 15%, which I think is very healthy for the city of Camrio. In your report, you will find a management district plan, which talks about the approval, extending this district for a 10-year plan, for a 10-year time, pardon me. And so what we're asking this evening is that you adopt a resolution to initiate the process for renewal of the Camrio Tourism Marketing District, and schedule the public hearings for May 22nd and June 12th. In the audience this evening is Juliana Gonzalez, with the Camrio Hotel and Tourism Association, who will be able to assist me in answering any questions or addressing any concerns you may have.
Juliana?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Juliana Gonzalez, and I am the executive director of the Camrio Hotel and Tourism Association. First of all, I do want to thank you all for your support in the initial formation of the Camrio Tourism Marketing District. We do have Nicole Farley here with us today, and she is a representative from Civitas, who actually helped us with the management district plan that's before you. So she's going to be doing a short presentation explaining what the tourism marketing district is, and then I will be finishing off with some additional information as well. So I'll have her take it off first.
Nicole? If you could put the, thank you. There you go, Nicole.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name's Nicole Farley with Civitas Advisors. As Juliana mentioned, I was, uh, we are the consulting firm that was hired to help with the renewal process of the Camrio Tourism Marketing District. Currently, there are 105 of these tourism marketing districts in the state of California that is generally raising over $200 million for tourism promotion. Every dollar counts today, as we are looking at driving more visitors into California and getting them beyond the gateways, such as Los Angeles. We have another approximately 70 that are throughout the United States, and those are continuously growing as well. As the, or as the city manager mentioned, this district was formed in 2014. The countywide district was also renewed in 2015. How tourism marketing districts works is, an assessment is levied on the lodging businesses. That assessment has the ability to be passed on to the guest. That is collected by the city, and then it is remitted to a nonprofit organization per the state statute. There is a level playing field with these districts. All of the lodging partners within the city are contributing, so there is a level playing field. There's transparency, as these districts are subject to the California Brown Act, as well as the Public Records Act. And what we've seen is, since the growth of these tourism improvement districts, it really does create a stable and reliable source of funding for these destination marketing organizations to continue to promote your destinations as a place to visit. And ultimately, what the hotels really appreciate is it doesn't impact their bottom line. They're able to pass this on to their guests, just as they would the transient occupancy tax. So the proposed district that we have in front of you today, it does continue to levy an assessment on all 11 lodging businesses within the city. The services are going to remain the same, with a strong focus on marketing and sales programs to attract visitors to Camrio, and to increase visitors, essentially putting heads in beds, getting those overnight stays. The initial rate is 2% of gross revenue. We are building in the ability to increase that assessment throughout the 10-year term. As we know, over 10 years, we don't know what is going to happen in the future, and we want the district to be able to have the flexibility with council's approval to increase that assessment on an annual basis. When we drafted the management district plan, we had estimated the budget would be about $520,000. Based on last year's revenues, we will be increasing that budget to about $570,000, which you'll see when we come back for the resolution of formation, and you guys, and when we ask you to adopt the district renewal. One difference, another difference for this term is that we will be going out for 10 years, which is the maximal, the maximum allowed, and then management will stay with the Camrio Hotel and Tourism Association. So the steps we've taken to get to you today is we've done the hotel outreach and consensus building, based on the, the new district parameters. We have drafted the management district plan, which has been reviewed by city staff, as well as the hotels. The hos, hotels have signed petitions in support of the district and the renewal, and those have come back over 50%, which is legally required in the state statute. And now we're here before you today to start the city approval process with a resolution of intent, and then coming back for the two public hearings. So this is the timeline that we've been working off of. We started working on the project in January of 2019, and we look to complete the public meeting on the 22nd of May, and then come back before you in June, on June 12th, for the final hearing, and ask you, again, that you adopt the resolution of formation. Today, we're here to ask you to adopt the resolution of intent to renew.
No questions?
And so with that, I will turn it back over to Juliana, and then I'll be available for questions and answers.
I believe we do have a question.
I have a question.
Ms. Farley?
I thought I heard you say that you had gone out to the hotel owners, and it was positive for more than 50%?
Yeah, the petitions that we've turned into the city represent over.
How much over? I mean, when we first started this, it was 100%. So I'm just curious as to whether some of them are not agreeing now, or?
We have seven petitions out of the 11 hotels. I will have to ask Juliana to talk on that.
I can speak on that. So we, yeah, so we have seven petitions. Two hotels were just not responsive to our, to our emails, so we did not receive, and one of them is neutral, so they did, did decide not to sign a petition.
And so the signed petitions, I mean, I, I, you speak a language I don't. A signed petition means they agree? If they disagree, they don't return it? I don't know what, what you mean.
A signed petition doesn't necessarily mean they agree or disagree. What it means is that they're allowing us to come before you to start the public hearing process.
Okay.
During the public hearing process, as long as there's no majority protest of the hotels, you will be able to adopt a resolution of formation in June.
Okay, very good. I have some other questions.
Do you want to proceed at this time?
Uh, it isn't over something she covers, so if somebody has questions for her, then...
Any other questions, Mr. Moschei?
I guess this might be for Juliana. Do the, so the hotels, they pay the 2%, and the 2% is based on gross sales. Do they self-report that?
Yes, they, they do. So when they submit their TOT report, it's also noted on there as well.
Okay, and they pay that quarterly, or is it monthly?
Monthly assessment.
Okay. And then, when it comes to spending, you, there is a board, and the board is majority-comprised of hotel owners and/or managers, representatives of those respective hotels, right?
Exactly. We have four hotels in our board, and then three other organizations that are interest, that have an interest in tourism.
And do they set the, the annual budget?
They do.
And they decide how expenditures are made, where to allocate funds?
Exactly.
If large expenditures are made, then that usually takes a vote of the board?
Yeah, we still follow the bra neck, so everything, you know, has to go through, through that process. And during my presentation portion of it, I will go over our budget allocation, how that looks like.
Yeah, I'll allow the rest of my questions till then.
Mr. Tremblay? Do you have a question?
Why don't I defer until?
Okay. Any other question, Mrs. Antangial?
Is the, I have no idea if 2% is a normal assessment for other districts. Is that within other ranges, or?
Yes, 2% to 3%. We're seeing districts go as high as 4% on renewal in this year, but yes, 2% is very average in California.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, may I ask one more? Yeah. Sorry. What, what is the normal term? I know you guys had a, a five-year term, and you're asking for a 10-year term. How, how, how common is a 10-year term versus a five-year versus some other alternative?
Very. We're, we're recommending that districts go to a 10-year terms, not to like, put my business out of, you know, put ourselves out of business, but if we can get you guys a 10-year term, that means you're going to save costs over the long run and not having to pay for renewal services, and be able to do some long-term budget planning and program, programming.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions of staff?
Juliana wants to talk.
Oh, proceed. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Tremblay, one more.
[laughing]
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. It's not for you, Juliana, it's for staff. There's one item that I really stumbled over in the staff report on big page three, where it indicated, and I quote, "It is important to note that the $520,000 amount was utilized for the petition process." When I first read that, the first three times, it was that $520,000 had been spent on a petition process, but that is not the case, correct? That was for the annual budget.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to confirm that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Proceed.
Perfect, thank you. So, I'm just gonna, so just a little bit of a history. So the Camrio Tourism Marketing District was established to create a sustainable funding source to drive demand to hotels. So back at, through comprehensive integrative marketing and sales strategy. So back in 2013, 2014, we had some hotel leaders here kind of get together, and they decided that, you know, we needed this type of organization to drive heads in beds. So in 2014, the Camrio City Council then approved a 2% assessment on room revenue. And, you know, how do we, what are our budget allocations, and what does that look like? How do we spend the funding that we receive? Well, 55% of that actually goes to direct marketing and sales, so whether we do straight advertising campaigns, marketing initiatives, PR, all of that is under that category. We then also budget 22% for local marketing. So if we want to attend any local events, if we want to support any local events and their growth, events that bring visitors into the city, 22% of our budget is assigned to that. We then move, move over to administration, so operations and staff are under that. We then have a 5% to the Chamber of Commerce, which they provide certain services to us, like office space, conference space, that sort of thing. And then 1% is reserved for city, so city costs are involved in that, city collection cost. Some of our major achievements since our inception in 2014 have been the creation of our online base, which is visitcamrio.com. We recently just upgraded the design, so it now has a better functionality. Also, it's more modern and clean, and we've been actually averaging probably now to about 8,000 to 10,000 monthly, or quarterly, visitors to our website. So it's increasing more and more. Um, in addition to that, on the left-hand side, you can see some of our advertising campaigns. So this first one is actually a leisure ad that we created, which shows off our, you know, 160 outlet stores, and more of a leisure focus. know, 160 outlet stores and more of a leisure focus. The one in the back is actually targeted towards our group markets, and this one is actually sports, so sports tournament, getting sports planners to plan their tournaments here. On the right-hand side, we have our visitor's guide, official visitor's guide and pocket map. So this is actually, we printed about 10,000 of these. We mail these out all over the country. People request these, and people can learn more about the city, what there is to do, what there is to, where there's to stay. And then we also have our pocket map as well that people love, and it's really popular. Another great resource for us actually that we're able to, to really, you know, have our, play out our mission is the Tourism Information Center. So this is actually located at the Camarillo Premium Outlets. We recently did redesign, so we added some beautiful imagery to the kiosk, and it's fully staffed, so we have someone there every day from 10 to 5, and they're there to answer questions and also to, to kind of entice that extended stay in our city. So we do get a lot of international visitors to the outlets, so we want to, if they're not planning to stay overnight, you know, maybe entice their stay by planning and, you know, putting together an itinerary for them. So yeah, they're there every day and they provide helpful information for visitors and residents alike. We also have interactive self-service touchscreens. So the one on the right-hand side is actually mounted to our Tourism Information Center, so to our kiosk, and, you know, whenever the staff is, is out of the office, people can still look at our website and can still browse and plan their, plan their trip. In addition to that, we have a standalone kiosk that's currently located at the Camarillo Chamber, and there, we're in the works of maybe moving that to our hotels as well. We also attend in street trade shows. So on the sale side of things, we also represent Camarillo in different cities, and we, you know, talk with tour operators, with, with media to kind of get more, more exposure for Camarillo and all that we have to offer. So on the right hand, that's just an individual Camarillo booth, and then on the, on the right hand, we have our, with partnership with the Ventura County Lodging Association, that's us attending a trade show in San Diego. And just three big benefits that the Camarillo Tourism Marketing District brings. The first one is that it enables Camarillo hotels to remain competitive in the growing market share of visitors. It also provides a stable, long-term funding source for tourism promotion and also provides an opportunity for increased city tax revenue. So that includes TOT and the sales tax component that visitors, you know, might go to our stores, might go to our restaurants and spend their money there. Just to share some hotel data, occupancy numbers have been increasing since 2014 and the formation of our Tourism Marketing District with, with having the highest yet. In 2018, we're at 81% of occupancy, which is actually relatively higher than a lot of our neighboring cities. Our ADR, average daily rate, we started at $92, an average of 92. We're currently at 115 in 2018. Revenue per available room, we were at, in 2014, 68, and 2018 at 94, average of revenue per available room. And then transient occupancy tax, as you guys know, we started in 2014. 2015 budget was at 2.2, 2017, 18 fiscal was at 2.5. And this is actually something that we're really proud of because Camarillo, the lodging industry in Camarillo has been doing relatively well compared to our neighboring cities, even compared to some of the counties, for example, Santa Barbara County and some of our neighboring cities. We had a 15.2 percentage change from last year, so we are really rocking it. And this is actually from March 2019, so we're really proud of our lodging industry here in Camarillo. And we just wanted to end with a little fun video just to kind of show you and give you an inside look at a, some of the content that we create. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
I have some.
Ms. Graban.
As a person who travels fairly often, I'm always concerned about the amount of taxes, and I know our taxes are, are lower than a lot of places, but I don't know if this is, is a multi-complex question, let me put it that way. Tony's teaching me. So we have a TOT, a transient occupancy tax for the city, and how much is that? What percentage? 9%. And then we have this currently at 2%, and then there's the county-wide one, and how much is that?
2%.
That's 2%. So 9, 11, 13%. So if we go up to one more percent, then that's 14%. I just wanted to say that I couldn't go with the, the 3%, but I think if we start getting higher, because your, your income increases as the daily rates increase because it's a percentage, so I think when we get higher than that, we're looking at getting up there as far as I can, I'm concerned with regard to the amount of added taxes to the hotel bills.
Yeah, and the 3% language was added on there just because it is a longer term. So we're, currently we're not pursuing it. We only wanted that option added to the plan just in case there, you know, changes in the economy or, and yeah, changes to the economy. So we just want to make sure that we have that verbiage in there that can, you know, help us in case that, we need to make that change. But it looks like it's still below the, the national average for destinations of our size.
Oh, listen, I got it. I know there are 25% and 27% taxes, and that's just the TOT without adding anything else in. So I, I understand that. I don't want us to get there, that's what I'm saying.
Perfect.
Ms. Santangelo?
I'm, I'm going to go off of that. If, if, so if the change was made, it can just be made, right?
No, we would have to actually bring it to the hotels, and the hotels will have to approve it, and then after that, we would have to bring it back to the city council for approval.
Okay. And I'm assuming that the concern with the taxes going up would be that it would be too expensive for people to have a stay in the hotels, and so the hotel owners would be mindful of that. So it's a balancing act.
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, they want to, you know, their rates want to continue to go down for, for their visitors. So yeah, we might get...
So if the request from them was to, to go up, then they would be seeing a benefit of doing that?
Exactly.
Because they don't think it will hurt their business as much, but bring in more revenue.
Exactly.
That's it.
Ms. Tremblay?
I, I think Ms. Santangelo's characterization of it as a balancing act is right on point, and, and I can understand being in the position of a, of a hotel owner. A couple of questions for you. On big page 18 on the report itself, there is a table on estimated annual budget if the maximum assessment rates are not adopted versus whether or not they, they would be adopted. So you can see that in this, under this table, there is a pretty sizable jump if the maximum assessment rates were to be adopted. And you'd be going, for example, from 520,000 in fiscal year 1920 to 669,000 in 2021 and 827,000 in 2122. And I'm conceptually supportive of this, and I think the results speak for themselves. But can you educate us a little bit? If that were to happen hypothetically, what would that, what would those additional funds be spent on? Would it be, to go back to the pie chart, would it be principally in direct marketing?
Yeah, we've, we've formed a policy where, you know, most of our funding would go to direct marketing and sales. There could also be a possibility where we want to add some to administration, to add additional staff, to grow our team. But essentially, the three, that increase that you're seeing there, it accounts for the estimated increase in, in room night sales. So that's why there, there's a big jump.
So, and one of the things I learned in the report is it's particularly effective, the, the marketing efforts in Bakersfield, which I think is really cool. And, and I know a lot of folks from the valley come out to this area, that come out to San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara, etc.
Yeah, regional drive markets.
Also LA and Orange. But let me go to page, big page 17, which is page nine of the report, and I just want to clarify something that Ms. Santangelo asked. Since the CHTA's board may increase the assessment rate by a maximum of one-half of 1% per year to a maximum rate of 3% upon city council approval, does that mean that every time there would be a proposed increase that would come back to council for approval? Or is it only in the event that there is a maximum assessment?
Yeah.
Am I articulate, do you understand the question? All right, okay.
Any change to the Tourism Marketing District that's allowed in the management district plan, such as an increase to the assessment, has to come back to council in the annual report, which you have the ability to approve or request the, the TMD to modify.
Okay, so there's a check and balance in, in that way.
You guys have ultimate oversight.
Okay. All right, thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Moshe?
I'm sure it's in the report, I probably just didn't see it. How many beds do we have in Camarillo right now amongst the hotels?
We have a little under 1,000, so 922 available, but you know, there's going to be more coming with the addition of the two new hotels, and we have one inactive hotel.
And inactive hotels, just about done, right? That's the one Office Central?
Um, in July.
Was in Ju, oh, in July that'll come back online?
Yes.
The, the chart that Mr. Tremblay was referring to on big page 18, where it shows projected income, if you want to call that fees that are raised, funds that are raised, it doesn't, this doesn't, I, I, does this take into account the, the two hotels that are being built across from the promenade? Because that's going to be about three, north of 300 rooms, right? So that's going to be an increase of about 30-plus percent to total beds in Camarillo?
It does not. It does not.
Okay. But that's going to be, once that is built and that comes online, that's operational, they will automatically be rolled into this, right? They will automatically be, start collecting the 2%.
Yeah, automatically be members of our association, yes.
All right, so this number will jump significantly by, by probably in excess of 30%.
It can.
Assuming that vacancy or occupancy rates hold steady, and it just doesn't bring the average down a little bit, but...
Exactly.
If all things stay constant, you guys will see a, a very sizable jump once that hotel comes online.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions? Everybody's questions, no questions? Got a card, Matt Lormer? 30 minutes, please.
Good evening, City Council. As I look at this, they want more revenue, but what I didn't see in the literature, let me remind you tonight that the Camarillo Ranch House has cost the taxpayers $2,771,000. So, that being said, we're asking for an increase. Has any member of staff or city council asked to put more focus on the Camarillo Ranch House? Let me remind you, the Camarillo Ranch House, in their statement here, they spent $65,000 on advertising. Command performance in their contract here, they spent $35,000. They're here, so I'm just curious, since the taxpayers are getting hit so heavily with running the ranch, I don't see any CRF members here tonight. Is any CRF member in the, here today? I don't see anybody. So I'm kind of curious, again, this board is supposed to be taking care of the ranch, but there's been no talk about it. I, I'd like to know from this group if they, how many conversations it's had during the year, the last few years regarding advertisement, the rates and all that stuff. I haven't heard about that. That's very interesting, because I haven't heard anything. And also, you're the city council, we're going to spend money. They showed literature on that screen, I did not see the Camarillo Ranch House. It should be a primary focus. Why? Because people are all going to eat in town, they're all going to go shopping, that's a given, but the Camarillo Ranch, as taxpayers, we should be on the top of the literature. I didn't see that. You should make that request. And also, during other election periods, I'd like to know, since we have so many empty commercial buildings, what about something like, hey, what a great place to live, shop, and open a business? Why can't we incorporate that? You know, they're asking for increases here, what are you doing to make more benefit for the dollars that we're spending at the ranch and other things? I think if they want more money, more percentages, however you guys want to work that out, I think it's intuitive of you to say, look, how about a little more focus on the ranch house, since it's the, it eats up budget dollars so much? So I would like to see what we're going to do to accomplish that. Again, I don't see any member of the Camarillo Ranch Board here tonight unless they're going to speak and pop in, but I'd like to know, again, the taxpayer's on the hook, we're going to add more money. This is not just about hotels, it's about promoting, isn't it? That's what I thought it is, promoting the community. So let's put some, you guys negotiate or staff and put some emphasis on the Camarillo Ranch House and also opening a business. Thank you.
Any other questions, staff?
Your Honor.
What's the word?
I move to adopt a resolution to initiate the process for renewal of the Camarillo Tourism Marketing District and schedule public hearings on May 22, 2019, and June 12, 2019.
Second. Is the motion a second and further discussion? Hearing done, please vote. Okay, that passes unanimously, so with that...
Can I just add that I was so impressed when we did this five years ago, that all of the hotel owners in town came to one of those public hearings to tell us how much they, they supported it. And they don't need to necessarily talk, but I hope they will show up this time again and show us they support it.
Okay, so with that, we're at the little after 6:00. So do we have time for the closed session, Counselor? Would you like to...
It's my understanding that we will not be doing the closed session in the 6:00 to 7:30 session, so this announcement should come later in the evening.
Very well. So with that, we will be recessed until 7:30. [applause]
I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting. Flag salute. Mr. Moshe, would you kindly lead us?
Absolutely. Everyone, please stand. Hand over heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amendments to the agenda? Any amendments to the agenda? No amendments.
Okay, there is a presentation, it's the winners of the Startup Ventura County.
So would you like to go to the podium there? Gary?
Oh, let me just second, let me turn that on. Proceed.
That would help. Okay, I'm Gary Cushing, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to thank you guys for your support, for us to put on the fourth annual Startup Ventura County. And tonight we have, I believe, we're supposed to have all three here, I believe we only have two of the three winning teams, so the third-place team is the one we're going to start with first. And Conrad will come up here, and it's called MorphWare, and he'll, he has a PowerPoint, and he'll kind of go through kind of what he, what he did, what his company is, and then we'll, if second place shows up, we'll get them. Thank you.
Thank you. Get to use the little clicker?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Just, I'll give a brief run-through of what my startup focuses on, and my background is in swimming, which is the current application of the technology, but it certainly can scale to other sports as well. So MorphWare is bringing on the age of the quantified athlete. We focus on applying motion data to provide athletes with a way to track their progress in training on a daily basis to make sure that they're staying on track. in training on a daily basis, to make sure that they're staying on track and making progress on a daily basis. As someone who swam over 20,000 miles and competed in the Olympic Trials in 2012, it was very uncertain where I was headed for my, across my 15 years of swimming. It was always based on hope, that I would keep on improving. And this technology enables people to know that they are staying on track. And as you see on the slide, there's an example of some of the motion data. The swimmer in the picture is on the Colombian Olympic team. And what I've found in some of the data is that we actually see differences between the elite performers and kids getting recruited to college, so much as she can measure up to six Gs in acceleration with her stroke, and these kids getting scholarships are measuring two to three. But if we tell them, if you want to become an elite swimmer someday, you should aim for the six, and keep on improving, trying to hit that metric every day. All of this data is new, we don't really have this kind of level of processing on motion data. Fitbit's kind of the closest with counting steps, but what you see on the board is actually kind of diagnosing a stroke further into what's happening stroke to stroke, not that, not simply saying that one stroke occurred. And the technology is enabled with a partner company called MoveSense. All of my software pretty much runs on these sensors to collect the motion data and process it in real time. This is a mock-up of what the app would look like. One of the metrics we've been able to show is the power of a swim stroke, and you can kind of tell when the swimmer's power declines as they're getting tired from the training. And with having this information, you allow athletes to actually balance the intensity of their workouts with recovery, effective recovery, knowing that they're starting out on a good level every day, or if they need to have more recovery by the end of the workout. Here's some of that analysis showing, this was live data showing how a swimmer swam a 50 butterfly. So the strength of his stroke was declining, the more strokes that he took. And there was just a lot of feedback when I interviewed 100 people about, you know, what it takes to apply this technology for it to actually be effective for daily use. And if you're like me, who swam for 15 years and 20,000 miles, you'd be scared to hear that last quote that says, if people wonder if they had the training they wanted. If I'm going to invest that much time and energy, I surely want to know that I did have the training I wanted, with no regrets. So again, the technology measures growth, allows you to work out efficiently, and allows you to stay on track of the training. And currently, training for Olympic Trials myself in 2020. I took a five-and-a-half-year break, but I was focusing on building this technology and to really finish developing the user experience and put together a case study. I put myself back in the water to start training again and learn everything that's going to take to bring this technology into a reality, along with your support of the event, the Startup Ventura County. So I'm quite appreciative of the opportunity and the support, so.
All right.
If you'd love to follow the journey, it's, I have an Instagram channel, @morphware, and there's a website as well, @morphware.co.
We have a question, Ms. Criss.
Well, congratulations, but tell us your name.
Oh, sorry. My name is Conrad Antoniuk. I'm the founder of the company.
Okay, well, congratulations on your third-place win.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Congratulations. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Oh, there you are. He's sitting in the back. Okay, so Austin will come up and he'll do College Plus.
Yes. Three-minute shot clock for this time? Sounds good. All right, is it, this is a fancy clicker, just click the right button, and we're good? Okay. Hey, everybody, it's Austin to be here. My name is Austin Janik, and I am the founding member of College Plus, which is a social media app that helps connect college students and helps them really live an adventurous life. And the problem we're trying to solve is campus connection on college campuses. And most people wouldn't think that is a problem, because college campuses are supposed to be the most social time of your entire life, that's what people tell you. But if you actually go into the statistics, we find that 70% of students have trouble connecting with others on campus, and actually battle loneliness. And the main reason for this, especially in my generation, is this kind of social media generation that we've created, that fosters a alone-together mentality, where we're all together in a room, but everybody's on their phones. And when you scroll through a feed, most of it's about watching other people live their lives instead of living your own. So, you know, we have all of these social media apps, you know, from Mark Zuckerberg, and he owns everything pretty much at this point. But they all claim to bring you together, that's their mission statement, but they really don't do that. And in a lot of ways, they do the opposite. So we wanted to try and solve for this on college campuses. And the way we do it, this is how campuses currently try and solve the problem. They just put up a big bulletin board, and people post events and what's happening on campus. It's terribly inefficient, as soon as rain comes, that gets destroyed. So the way we've been actually trying to solve this is through College Plus. It's a social media application that allows students to connect to each other. So the way it works is, once you load up the application, it puts you in a campus community based upon the campus you're at. So if you're at UCLA, you'll be connected with all the UCLA students. If you're at CalU, where I go, you'll be with all the CalU students. And it's a student-driven feed. So when you scroll through the feed, you can see everything that's happening on campus. Maybe a group of people who want to set up a pickup basketball game later that night, another group of students who are trying to arrange a carpool to go to Coachella, another group that has a club meeting for the robotics club. And any student can post about what they're up to. And then, if you're interested in joining one of these events, you simply find something you're interested in, you tap it, and you hit the join button, and that throws you into a group chat, in which you can actually connect and set up all the details. So in a way, what we're trying to do is capture the informal interactions that actually define the college experience, which isn't necessarily an official campus-sponsored event, but the moment-to-moment interactions. So we're doing that through the application. Now, we have this running on a device, so if anybody wants to see it later, we can show you the actual run-by-run through the taps. But essentially, it's for all of these different things, and it's all student-driven connection. So in terms of monetization, I don't know if we were supposed to get into the deep business, but I find it interesting, so why not? The way we're going to monetize an application like this is not through advertisements, even though that's typically the path. And the reason for that is advertisements are actually the antithesis of our mission, because ads are about monetizing your attention. It's about trying to get you to stay on the application for as long as possible, for as much time as possible, in order to generate the most amount of ad revenue. So instead, what we're going to do is actually approach these college campuses, who want to get their message and their information out to students. So right now, they use bulletin boards and they use emails, but we're going to say, look, we already have all of the eyeballs on campus looking at our app. So if they want to post about a campus-specific event, then they're going to pay us to do it. So for the students, it's a student-driven app that's free, but if the campuses want to get on board, then they actually pay us for the privilege of doing that. So what this means is that all these other social media apps aren't really the competitors here, because we're the anti-social media, we're trying to get people actually connecting out in the real world. And that's the basic process for doing that. And so just to tell you where we are right now, we're launching the beta, so we have the version on the phone right now that we'll be launching at California Lutheran University coming up in the fall. And then after that, we're going to expand through California schools, so the UCLA system, the UC schools, before we go nationwide. So that's the plan for the go-to-market strategy, is that four-step process. And then this is the team, it's me, my brother, we're both CalU students, or he's an alumn now, he just graduated. And then we have Dr. Reinhardt, who's the head of the Computer Science Department. So we've all been working on this project to make it a reality. So that is College Plus. Thanks for your attention, everybody.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And good luck.
I told you, these guys are good.
Yeah, this is the best we've seen, I think, in the years.
Okay, and the last one is Matt, and they're the first-place team, and it's called Care Exchange. And I'll let him do his introduction.
Hi, everybody, my name is Matt Reynolds. I am one of the co-founders, two co-founders of Care Exchange. Thank you for your time, I'm happy to be here in front of the council, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and Gary for putting together the Startup Ventura County and supporting us from the onset of this event. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about our business model, and I'll tell you about the problem that we are attempting to solve. I'll start off with the problem itself. The problem is, Americans are getting old. By 2050, one in four Americans will be a senior citizen. And those older Americans are going to require care. About, currently, about 12 million Americans receive what is called long-term care, that is non-medical care that is associated with activities of daily living, namely, transportation, cooking, cleaning, toileting, things like that, things that a family or a community member can do. That number is going to jump from 12 million to 27 million by 2050. And overwhelmingly, these people want to receive that care that they're going to need in their homes, rather than in a facility. And also overwhelmingly, these people would prefer for that care to be provided by their family, by their community, rather than a paid professional. They perceive it to be, have more value in terms of it being more cost-effective, more convenient, more trustworthy, and ultimately leading to a better quality of life for our senior family members or community members. The problem is, all demographic trends are saying that it's only going to become more and more difficult for our families to take care of our loved ones. And for those who can, I'm sure some of you on the council can relate, that caregiving for your family or community members is very, very difficult. It is difficult physically, it's difficult emotionally, it's difficult financially, spiritually, however you want to categorize it, it is just difficult. And it is only becoming harder, like I said. So what that's going to mean is that family or communities are going to have to look to more and more formal, professional alternatives to find care for their loved ones. But the problem is, there aren't enough professional, low-skilled caregivers either. Despite the growing demand, there is a growing gap in the supply of low-skilled home care. The reason for that, as you can imagine, is caregiving is very hard work. It is relatively low pay, there aren't a lot of benefits, there aren't a lot of chances of professional advancement, there aren't a lot of reasons why your average person would become or remain a home caregiver. But become home caregivers they must, because when you don't, when you have this growing demand, and this isn't a Camarillo issue, it's not a Ventura County, California, this is a national, and in fact, it's a global issue. When you have this growing, growing group of people who need care, but you have an inability for family or community members to provide that care, yet you have a severe shortage, a growing shortage by the day of professionals who are able to provide that care, the question ultimately is, who will care for us? This is a very, very fundamental problem that's affecting the America, and this long-term care crisis is only going to get worse through 2050. So our solution is a digital home care marketplace, we're currently calling Care Exchange. Care Exchange, we're positioning it to be the formal alternative to what's called informal care, that family or community caregiving. And the way we're positioning the marketplace is to be the formal alternative by emulating and surpassing the value that people commonly associate with informal family or community caregiving. And the way we're going to be doing that is, first and foremost, by providing a marketplace that has a dual-profile model. It'll have the best digital representation of the care need in terms of a robust and fluid user profile. Similarly, it will have profiles for all independent care providers and local agencies. And we will be matching those profiles of individuals on the platform based on professional and personal compatibility. So, so think of it kind of like an eHarmony or a Match.com, but for professional caregiving services. It will also be a true marketplace. Like I said already, it'll be comprised of independent caregivers who are typically low-skilled and would charge a lower rate, if that's what a particular care seeker would need. Alternatively, it'll have all the reflection of all the local agencies, most of whom are currently brick and mortar and don't really have any robust digital representation. So what this would do is, it would create a one-stop national marketplace, where people can find local care and find that balanced representation of what they might need based on their particular needs. It'll be a one-stop solution, so it'll have a robust suite of services, and it'll handle tax, payroll, liability, bonding, all of the pitfalls and difficulties that are typically associated when someone has to formally hire a home caregiver, all those reasons why somebody would deal with all the stress and reservations of family or community caregiving, because they just don't know how to hire somebody correctly. It'll manage all of those day-to-day tasks. And also, it'll, and this is very, very important, it'll provide on-demand employment through the sharing economy. What I mean by that is, you know, if you were to think 10 years ago, that there'd be a whole robust marketplace where random strangers could pick you up in your car and drive you around, you would think it's crazy. But now, through this, these shared economic principles, where people have extra times, be it a home for Airbnb, extra resources like a car, extra time, they're able to monetize that and provide you a shared, a shared service based on these shared economic principles. That is going to be the only way where we're going to solve this long-term care crisis, where we convince, through these on-deployment, on-demand, shared economic means, encouraging and incentivizing people to become and remain home caregivers. And that is what our marketplace will do. So I'll wrap it up. I'm going to read our mission and vision statement, and then I'll say one last thing. Care Exchange is a fundamental solution to America's long-term care crisis. By offering options for families, jobs to the many, and a future for the industry, our marketplace will dignify and elevate those who provide home care and receive it. We seek to change the reality of home care from one of surviving to one of thriving together. And the last thing I'll say is that our, our business model has really, really resonated with the local community, and we're actually really taken back and really grateful with the amount of support that we've received thus far from members of the community. And we know that Camarillo has a proportionally higher aging, aging demographic, and we know that there's a lot of infrastructure services that support, that are already in place to support this, this key demographic. So as we look to Camarillo as a place where we can pilot our program, we look to do that and operate in synergy with these existing services, and hopefully build something bigger and grander and more special together that can serve Camarillo and Ventura County's aging population. All right, that's it, thank you.
Congratulations, students.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Gary, anything else?
Any questions? Any questions? I was going to tell them to be careful about saying aging population.
Are you saying we're old?
Just a, just a couple more things I'd like to say. I would like to thank Martin Chum for, again, you know, four years ago, he's the one that came with the idea this year. And I really used him this year to also get the mentors, because, you know, Friday night, we had the presentation. Saturday, he gets mentors of quality people that these young entrepreneurs could never get appointments with. They could never talk to him. And they could sit down with them for a half hour in four different sessions. And then on Sunday, Chris Meisner from Meisner Filtration has been great about keeping our judges every year coming back, and we have some of the top CEOs, you know, in the county that come and judge. And so I just want to thank them, you know, because without those two guys, I couldn't really put this thing on, and I really appreciate it. Okay? And I just want to thank you again, council. And one other thing that, that has come out, Matt didn't, he said he's gotten help from the community. We got a thing from, Richard Montney from Dignity Health, saying that Dignity Health may have some grant money that he can apply for. Martin reached out to him, because he has some contacts with the guy that has a company that has caregivers. Then I told him he should meet Kara Partridge, and who walked out of the back this, tonight was Kara. So the synergy is there, and we just need to keep this thing going. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin and Gary, for helping us with this. Any other comments? Sean?
I just want to commend, I think this is a great event, and I would love to continue to explore how we can keep taking this to the next level and the next level.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to just thank everybody who helped put it on, Martin, Gary, you do a great job, and I hope you'll both continue.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Public comments? Non-agenda items, three minutes. Matt Lormer?
Good evening, City Council. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about public comments. You know, in America, you have a right to speak at your local government, you have a right to say whatever you want, and that's by that flag right there, people gave their lives. It's very important that you have that opportunity, and it's not gerrymandered. So let me go into what my complaint is. My complaint was that I talked several times, you're aware, at different city council meetings. The last one, I turned a speaker card in for 5G at the beginning. Then I'm on videotape, if you turn your video, it was number four. I should have spoke number four, but what happened was, apparently, from my understanding, I received a call from Camarillo Ranch, Mr. Devlin had a meltdown, because the city manager, along with Jeffrey... along with Jeffrey, the city clerk, somehow manipulated my card so it was moved so Mr. Charles Devlin could have his viewpoint. I don't appreciate that. Are you aware that in the county, when you give a speaker card, they write the time on it, or in LA County? I think it's time to put the time on there. Gerrymandering has everywhere. I don't think it's right what happened to me. I don't think it's a mistake, I think it was done intentionally, I don't appreciate it. You know, the mayor called me up, he said I had no part of it. I said, "Great, what are you going to do? You're, you're the mayor, what are you going to do?" Did I get a phone call from any of these people? No phone call. You're the mayor. You know, we're supposed to have a real mayor, that's why it should be elected. It shouldn't be a fake mayor who just says, "I'm going to do nothing." You didn't do anything, Kevin. I said, "I expect a phone call from these two representatives." Not one phone call. I don't like it. When somebody turns your speaker card in, it should go by the order they received. If you go to a doctor's office, they don't put you last if you got there first. If you go stand in the Dodger Stadium, they don't pick you last, they go by the order. Why don't you guys get your act together? Why don't you put the time that a person's speaker card comes in here and treated for? Because it's not right. It wasn't an accident. I find it offensive, and it shouldn't happen in this chamber. We don't have politics, we don't pick winners and losers. If the, if the city manager doesn't like me, or the city clerk doesn't like me, if you don't like me, too bad. But when you come in here, put the time and, and have some sense of order. But for the mayor to say, "I don't know what to do, I have no idea." Did he talk to any of the city councilmen? Did you get a call from the mayor saying that we should put the time that the speaker card gets turned in? You know something? Have respect. See that flag there? You pledge allegiance to it every night before these people come in here. Why not have a process? LA County has a process, your county has a process, put the time on there and go by that. Is it too much to ask? Really? Thank you.
Angel Garcia?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Angel Garcia. I am from Oxnard, and I am here on behalf of California State University Channel Islands. Now, I am here to cordially invite you, members of the staff, city council, and public of Camarillo, to the event that I am coordinating for my graduating project. It is called Humanizing Homelessness, and it's to highlight the growing issue of homelessness in the city of Oxnard, but not just the city of Oxnard, but throughout the county. It is going to be taking place on May 9th, Thursday, at 3:00 PM at the Oxnard Performing Life, at the Oxnard Performing Arts Center. There will be a documentary, as well as students from the sociology department presenting key research. And stakeholders of the community are invited, and I strongly urge that you RSVP, the RSVP link is provided to you in the email as well as on the official flyer. If you have any questions, feel free to email me, I have my email located at the bottom. And this event is open to the public, however, I strongly recommend that you RSVP as seating is limited, and I do expect that it's going to fill up, which is great. There will be a panel on there of key stakeholders as well, providing key information, and I have flyers right here for you available to you and for the public as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Barbara Williams?
I really appreciate that you didn't do the closed session regarding the Camarillo Ranch Foundation. The city needs to abolish the Camarillo Ranch Foundation immediately for mismanagement. And you got some quantifiable data from Matt Lorimer to show how much of a concern it is to the taxpayer. I was unable to attend the meeting yesterday, but I did get a summary from a friend. The three members of the CRF that participated did not provide documentation or plans for the board's future. As such, I personally interpret that to mean it's not important to them. They did not seem to have a grasp of how much the city has spent on the ranch, and even Mr. Devlin seemed to think the city needs to pay more. They did not take responsibility for the ranch being in the red for quite a long time. As stewards of the ranch, they did not seem interested in the rental business. More importantly, they did not seem to know how many people were employed by the ranch. The current board does not possess the knowledge, the skills, and abilities to manage the historical property entrusted to them. We need professionals who have experience, experience in managing a historical monument. The CRF has evolved away from what is, was intended to be in the beginning, and under their management, the Camarillo Ranch will never be self-sustaining and could easily get into disrepair and no longer usable by the public. This is an important historical site and needs to be managed by people who can keep it a premier historical monument in Ventura County. We owe this to Adolfo Camarillo and his descendants, and we owe this to the taxpayers. There is no excuse for what has happened at the ranch, and the board needs to go now.
Teri Bray?
Good evening. The reason I'm here is I was motivated by a comment that Ms. Craven made at the meeting of April 10th. And hearing what I just heard now and other things about the Camarillo Ranch Foundation that's been in disarray back when I was on the board, there seems to be a double standard for, for some nonprofits to not play by the rules and adhere to what everybody else has put through. The comment that Ms. Craven made in regards to Habitat for Humanity, they're such a wonderful organization, and there's only one person that made a complaint, I think you were referring to me. But the reality is, what I brought to your attention, and afterwards to your attention and the entire council and staff, you went ahead and attended their Havana Nights fundraiser anyways, when Habitat was brought to everybody's attention, they've been operating without a California state contractor's license for over 34 years. That is a huge eye-opener. There's a lot of people at Casa del Norte that are at risk because the Camarillo City Council financed $240,000 of taxpayer money to do renovations at that mobile home park. And at that time, and I confirmed, no permits were pulled because Habitat couldn't pull those permits. So my complaint, and my awareness that was brought to this city council, to be played down as it was like, "Nothing," is insulting, is ridiculous, is negligent, and I really feel that you, Ms. Craven, are in denial of the importance of what was brought to light to this council and to the county. From my complaint and to the awareness that I made, the Ventura County District Attorney's Office got involved and held Habitat accountable and gave me a letter of kudos that they would have not been brought into compliance had I not pursued that complaint. The California Contractors Board issued a citation of violation for operating without a contractor's license in the name of Stephen Dwyer, their executive director at that time. Housing and Community Development that oversees renovations and remodels of mobile homes in the state of California is the one that found multiple violations done by Habitat for Humanity. So therefore, to downplay the so-called one complaint that actually got hundreds of people involved, to get them into compliance while this council still financed them when they were not licensed to receive the money and to say they do such wonderful work? Well, maybe they do now. But it's on this council that when somebody at Casa del Norte falls through a floor, falls through their toilet, gets electrocuted, their place burns down, of the work that you financed that wasn't permitted, it's on you. And you're going to have to live with that. And that's what happened with my complaint.
Lorraine Soritari?
Before my time starts, can I pass these papers? I think I need to keep one, and can Mr. Baca? I think I have enough for everyone in the panel. Can Mr. Baca have one?
There's one.
So I was here last week, I mean, two weeks ago, in the last, at the last meeting addressing 5G. And Mr. Baca presented his report, and I found out that there was already an ordinance made in 2014. So, and the mayor and the district attorney, or city attorney, said that, you know, you have to inform the citizens of Camarillo that 5G is coming up, right? So I waited for some circulation, and there here is the ECON, and it says, "Like it or not, GE is on its way." Now, I was so happy because it says in here, if you go to the section I already highlighted for you, and it says in here, "Along with setting aesthetics, standards Camarillo regulation prohibits new cell towers within 600 feet of any residential property line or residential zone." So I was so happy about it. So I came to City Hall on Monday, and I asked people at the city planning department to give me a hard copy as evidence of it. They couldn't give me one. But if you read this new ordinance, it's an amendment to the ordinance, it says they will let residents that live within 600 feet know about this. Now, if you turn your page to this one in here, it says in here that industry engineers says each wireless carriage will need 65G cells sized for every square mile. Camarillo has 19.86 square miles, so that means I multiply it and I run it up to zero, so it comes up to 1,200, I'm sorry, yeah, 1,200 towers in the city. Now, you have to send a mail to everyone, because everyone is going to have one close by. Now, the issue that I'm here is because I told them, "Since the ECON is misleading Camarillo citizens, please, that you call the ECON or send an email and say you have provided wrong information. You know what your employee, Mr. Baca, said? That's not a problem. If people wants to know the truth, they can come and ask us." But that's not the real true. You guys are here to represent us. You guys are supposed to be in our favor, and look what that employee told me. And then I asked, "If I can be told where the towers are for the 4G?" And he said, "Of course, we cannot give that information up." Last time I was here, Mrs. Santangelo says, "Oh, you guys think that is a conspiracy theory? Now I'm starting to think that is a conspiracy theory if you're not willing to give that information to us." Now, I live within 80 feet of a 4G tower. Thank you, and I hope you address the problem with that, ECON. And this is for Mrs. Santangelo, because over here it tells, she says that...
Anyone else like to? You could, you could, you could present that to the city clerk, please. Anyone else like to? Anyone else like to address public comments? Okay, we'll get down to item 18, it's the public hearing regarding the proposed maps. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, we do. Good evening, city council. This public hearing is the third in the series relating to the process to transition from at-large elections to by-district elections for the city council. Before I go further, I just want to remind city council that Spanish translation services are available for this item, and to ask our translation team to step forward to advise the audience that these services are available.
Las personas que quieren escuchar la traducción simultánea al español de esta audiencia pueden pasar a la parte de atrás y tomar un aparato receptor para escuchar la traducción. Gracias.
Thank you. This evening, we're one step closer to district-based elections. You will receive a presentation from the city's demographer, National Demographics Corporation, NDC, on the draft maps and associated sequencing. Following that, you should receive public comments. Upon closing the public hearing, we ask that you discuss the maps and potential election sequencing and provide direction on maps which may require additional analysis or revision, maps for further consideration at the next public hearing, if you would like new maps repaired, and to provide guidance on the sequencing. Twelve maps have been submitted for your consideration, and NDC has prepared a potential election sequencing table related to the maps. Please review all maps, including the ones that aren't in compliance with the criteria for drawing the district boundaries, as there may be nuggets of valuable information or other considerations not included in other maps. Additionally, the agenda reports includes comment from the map submitters for your information. And just as a final reminder, the public has until May 9th at 5:00 PM to submit additional maps for your consideration at the public hearing scheduled for May 22nd, 2019. And now I'll ask Robert McIntyre from NDC to proceed with his presentation.
Hello, good evening. It's an honor to be here again with you. You're at step three of a minimum four-step process, typically it's a five-step for cities, in your decision or your ability to choose to move toward district-based elections. In doing so, just as a very brief reminder, you, you've already had two pre-draft hearings, the last two public hearings, we discussed the criteria that are used to draw maps. Some things we talked about were the Federal Voting Rights Act and the requirement of having a roughly equal population for every council district according to the 2010 census. We talked about the idea of drawing compact and contiguous districts. We also talked about the idea of communities of interest, and some of the feedback you're going to get tonight when we talk about some of the community-presented maps, actually gave you some of their ideas, what they consider to be communities of interest. And as you look at different maps, a couple of them we're going to review and then say, you can really only use them for their ideas around communities of interest because they don't meet the legal requirement. Out of the 12 maps, seven of them do meet the legal requirements and can move forward, but you can use information from the other five maps in evaluating and giving feedback. So as community members watch the video or listen or decide they want to go draw maps before the May 9th deadline for the next meeting and produce new ones, that's still possible. One of the things you did do at the last meeting was let the community know that you're really interested in a five council district map with a rotating mayor. And that was a very important criteria to set out early because you prevented many of your community members from spending a very significant amount of time learning that software from 2009, only to have maps set aside because they didn't meet that requirement. So I commend you for that. So now we're very briefly going to go over the 12 maps that have been submitted, talk about some of the theory, and then I'm going to go, I'll answer any questions you have before, and, and I can come back after, but I would suggest you take public comment, and then, and then we can continue the discussion, and if you want to give me guidance, gosh, we really like this, but could you put these two together or make these minor adjustments and bring back alternatives? That, after the public has commented, would be the best time to do that. That way you've really weighed and heard what the community says before you do that. So with, with further ado, we'll start with map one, or 101, that's now up on the screen. Map 101 was created using the Excel mapping tool by community member Michael Colley. It's a five council district map that does meet the contiguous requirement, and when you see council district three, that's what's called a point of contiguous, contiguity. So it actually does meet the legal requirement, although just barely. If we zoom in, you can see what, what the mapper has done there, and if we were going, if that was a map that the council liked, we would suggest probably grabbing a little bit of space and making that pathway through there for three between those other two council districts, a little wider, just to make it a little stronger if it, if it was ever challenged in the courts. The map has very good population deviation balance, meaning the lowest underpopulated district to the highest overpopulated district, that variance is only 2.33%, well within the maximum 10% we talked about during the first two meetings. It also has a maximum Latino district according to citizen voting age population of 30% in District Three, and it has a second district, the second highest Latino district is Districts One and Four, both at 20%, slightly below the citywide average, but still pretty good considering it got such a high number in District Three. It also has a fairly densely populated maximum Asian population according to citizen voting age population in District One at 13%. This particular map does pair three council members in District Two, and that's one of the criteria we talked about, is that can be considered, not exclusively, but as part of a group of considerations. Michael Colley said that when, when he drew the map, he was really looking at two factors, population balance among the districts and compactness, and, and I think did a fairly nice job in doing so. So that's map 101. Now if we can move to map 102. There we go. And so map 102 was also created using the Excel tool by Bill Taber, Tabor, Taber, is a five district map. Unfortunately, does not meet the contiguous requirement, so as we see, three is completely... Unfortunately, it does not meet the contiguous requirement, so as we see, three is completely separated in the, in the southern part of the town from three up north, and so that would violate the, the continuity requirement in mapping. So that, that means you couldn't, while you couldn't adopt this map, it had, there are other policy discussions to be had in looking at this. Did a really nice job with the population deviation at 6.04% and has a maximum Latino citizen voting age population of 25% in District Three and 23% in District Two, and an Asian-American population in District One of 14%. Mr. Tabor said that he, he was trying to slightly underallocate the western part of town where, where new housing has gone in, and typically, that would be a criteria that we would discuss much more in-depth at the next, right after the next census. So if there's a lot of planned development coming on in '21, '22, '23, '24, if we know about that, then we might try to under-populate those parts of town, so as new, new people move in, you can account for that to a certain extent. Your, your city is not quite big enough to go real far down that road.
Because this map will only be for the next election. Before the following election, it will be redone. Is that correct?
Correct. The map, maps adopted in this process will only be effective for the 2020 election. It's a great point. And one of the other notes from Mr. Tabor's notes was that, he really wanted to point out the way he split up the city, and so the, the assignments that he've made are worth considering. So basically, where you see where he chose kind of large streets or the division points without town, he just wanted to really point out. And, and he noted that, you know, you're very fortunate that your town is, that each ethnicity is fairly well dispersed throughout, so you don't have an enclave of one particular group, which means you're never going to get super high numbers in one, one area, and, and that was what Mr. Tabor pointed out. No, there are two coun, I'm sorry, there are two council members grouped in District Three, and like I said, not a legal map, but the policy implications are worth considering. Moving on to map 103. Map 103 was also created using the Excel tool that the council made available to, to the, to the city and, or to the, to the citizens of the city, but I forgot to point out when I started, the city staff has done an amazing job of setting up a webpage that not only contains the entire history of this process, but every presentation, every video, every map in PDF, the viewer as well, so citizens can, can jump in at any point during the process and catch up quite easily. So for those who are just seeing this for the first time, very easy to get on board. Jared Barton made map 103, it's a five district map. We have another situation where we've got a point of continuity, continuity right there, it does meet the legal requirement, just barely. Population deviation is super low at 1.68%, and the maximum Latino population in District Three is 25%, with 23% in District Two, and a significant Asian population in District One at 13%. There are two council members paired in District Three, and we look at Mr. Barton's comments, by the way, I think you'll know, you'll probably agree that he has a pretty, pretty great sense of humor. I'm not going to read the joke, but it seems as though he really tries to create at least one district that, that definitely exceeds the city average for Latinos, and, and really pointed out that, wanted to make sure that districts were compact, so compact was his, one of his major goals. And, and he says that he managed to do it without really looking at where council members live, and still only managed to pair two council members, so that's, that's pretty impressive. Moving on to map 104, also created using the Excel tool by Michael Nye, it's a five district map. It does meet the contiguousness requirement, just barely...
Really?
...with a jump over county property. So you have a county strip of land right there where the freeway is, and so it technically meets the legal requirement, so right there. So I say just barely, if, if this was a map of interest, if, if the council liked the way that this was put together, then we would probably seek to widen that strip just a little bit, where we could get away with it while still population balancing. This particular map only had a 3.31% population deviation, so there might be an opportunity to do that. District Three in this map had a 30% Latino citizen voting age population and a 23% in District Two, 14% in District One with the citizen voting age population of, of Asian-Americans. It doesn't pair any council members, and, and Mr. Nye did not really give any comments as far as policy choices he made in creating that map. We'll move on to map 105.
I have one question on this. How does, how does the continuity work with, with District Four there?
So it's, it's jumping over neighboring city land. So we don't typically recommend that, but it, it is allowable, mainly because it confuses citizens. So you'll see, and because you have mountainous regions, this is typically the only time in mountainous regions we see this, and, and we're reasonably comfortable with it as your demographer. If we were in a flat part of town and somebody tried this, we would probably urge different choices. But because you're right on the edge of a mountainous region there, and it's, it's jumping somebody else's jurisdiction, legally, it's, it's allowable. Great question. Okay, so now we're moving on to map 105. Map 105 was also created using the Excel tool by Roy Villa. It's a four district map, so it doesn't meet the criteria called out during the last discussion by the council. It does meet the contiguousness requirement, although it does have a population deviation of 32.54%, so would not meet the Federal Voting Rights Act requirement. Because of that, we did not spend time analyzing the, the maximum Latino and Asian-American areas. It does pair two council members in District Two, and Mr. Villa did not present comments with his map submitted.
There are a lot of people left out.
There are. So it, not only is it not contiguous, not population balanced, and some parts were unassigned, but perhaps examination of which, which roads were chosen as dividing areas might be policy implications for your consideration on a map like this? I, I just definitely don't want Mr. Villa to feel like it was a waste of his time to submit the map. There, there's definitely information to be gleaned from the map, and it may raise more conversation if Mr. Villa decides to come to the podium at some point and explain some of the choices he made. As with anybody who submitted a map, it's always helpful if they come explain the why, because then it allows you to evaluate the, you know, turn their conversation into potential policy, and that's always a goal.
And residents can submit several maps, can they not?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And certainly, two or three makes sense. This is not a, a super large city that we can divide up 50 different ways. At some point, there is kind of diminishing returns. I'd say two or three is probably a good max number, three would be on the high side. Occasionally, we get somebody who has an agenda, and they'll try to submit like 50 maps, but in the end, that's, it becomes so cumbersome that it just bogs down the, the process, and we end up grouping them, or saying, out of, you know, you have a bunch of these style maps, which one's the best out of this group, and we withdraw the others? So we can really try to make this a process that moves forward, rather than just doing something else. Okay, so now we're moving on to map 106. Map 106 was created using the Excel tool by Roger Sage. It's a five district map, but does not meet the contiguous requirement. We see District Three is broken in the south, and we saw this happen actually on a couple maps, also map 102. And, and while it's not contiguous and doesn't meet the legal requirement, if adjustments could be made for population balancing, this map could be brought back into, into compliance and be brought back into the fold as, as a potentially selectable map. It does have a population deviation of 7.69%, which is within the legal limit. District Four has a citizen voting age population grouping for Latinos of 27%. District Three has 22%, and District One has a 13% Asian-American population. District Two, in this case, actually groups three council members. And so when Mr. Sage was making this map, he talked about dividing the city into contiguous districts, taking into account visible boundaries, so balancing high and low population areas, weighting more to the high and others in the low. So most districts can be expanded to account for growth, and then says it does not gerrymander along racial lines, and I think his map bears that out. So now we'll take a look at map 107. So Nash Dingman created map 107, and was the adventurous one of the group using the online tool, so I'd like to commend Nash for attempting to do that because it's not an easy process. It's a five district map, is, is barely contiguous, so we have some jumping over the foothills that we see there, some kind of workaround, and so when we look right there, that's where we run into the, the concern about continuity, continuity with District One, and why we say barely. But this map is not for that reason that we would suggest that this map not move forward, it's actually because it potentially dilutes the Latino population. But that jump between two and three for, for Area One, just to the north there, is the primary concern with this particular map. District Three does have a, a citizen voting age population of 25% Latino, Area Two has 23% and 14% Asian-American in District One. District Two, District One pairs two council members, and District Three also pairs two council members. And there was a bit of concern in the way this was, this map was created around dilution, not so much in Council District Three, but in Two, Three, and Four. Mr. Nash actually said that his goal, he, he said he intentionally gerrymandered districts, but he's not using the right term. Actually, he very intentionally identified a community of interest around socioeconomics, income. And in doing so, sought to put, to group one area with the highest socioeconomic, and then in Area One, Area Four with the lowest, Areas Two and Three capture the upper-middle percentage, Area Five captures the lower-middle percentage. Three was pushed across Los Posas to allow One to capture Mission Oaks, Oak Canyon, Santa Rosa area, while Two, while, area from Two while remaining contiguous. The Two-Three border was thrown together to make it fit, which is sometimes what we have to do when we're mapping, and the Four-Five border was also thrown together southeast of Santa Rosa. And so there, there's definitely some community of interest conversation, there's also some choices around boundaries worth noting and discussing. Moving on to map 109. Map 109 is a PDF map, which was basically the paper-drawn map. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip 108? 108, let's go back to 108, which was also a paper-drawn map by Anonymous. It's a four district map, which does not meet the council's requirement. It has a population deviation of 127% and pairs council members, two of them in District Two and two in District Three. This would be very much what we'd call kind of a regional map, and certainly, you can see where some dividing lines are, and that may or may not play into your, your, your consideration, your conversation. So the, the communities of interest are actually listed in the, in the submission notes. One, using the older community, so Leisure Village, Natural Disasters and Development Concerns. Two, Village at the Park, Mission Oaks, La Meriposa, Boys and Girls Club, and so this, this is in your packet on, on which areas they, they felt like they were trying to group together. Boys and Girls Club, Schools, Family Friendly Student Transit. Three, using the criteria of economic development, Old Town, Outlets, Conference Center, Apartments, considerations of traffic, Ranch House. Four, Heights, Wealth Area, Spanish Hills, Spring Hill, Library, RCHS. And, and so here, while the, while the map was drawn with four districts, certainly gives you ideas of pairings of communities of interest in their notes. Now moving on to map 109, please. Exactly. Map 109 was created using the paper PDF map submitted by Anonymous, and has five council districts. It is contiguous, it has a population deviation of 8.91%, and District Two has a citizen voting age population of Latinos at 27% and District Three at 24%. District One in the west has an Asian-American population, citizen voting age population of 13%. Map submitter 109 did not include comments in their map submission, and, and none of the districts pair current council members, so they kind of honor the will of the citizenry in the last election. Map 110, 111, and 112 were created by National Demographics, and the goal of these maps was not to outdo or better anybody else, it was really to round out your set of options, or try to allow for a kind of more rounded discussion, both by, in public comments and hopefully by the council. And so looking at map 110, it's a five district map, contiguous, has a population deviation of 4.35%. We do achieve a 29% Latino citizen voting age population in District Three and 22% in District Two. I noticed there was an error in my chart on this map and the next one, I'll make sure to update the, the chart that has the percentages that summarize these for you. And then an Asian-American population in District One of 13%. No council members are paired in 110. 110 is really, we consider to be a slightly more compact version of 109, where the districts are clearly aligned with regions of the city. One, using the north and northwest. Two, looking at the central and southwest. Three, very central district. Four, in the northeast, and five, in the southeast. Map 11, 111, is also written by NDC, or created by NDC, has a five council districts. It is contiguous with a population deviation of 2.66%. Council District Five, in this case, oh, that's very vivid. Council District Five, in this case, has 26% citizen voting age population of Latinos. Council District Two has 23%, and Council District One has 14% Asian-American. No council members are paired in this map. And this is roughly, this is what we'd call like a horizontal map or a sandwich map, where we kind of take longer breaths of your community, and, and the goal of a map like this is to, to grab very various socioeconomic or community groups and pair them in a different way or provide a different set of options. You may or may not like that, sometimes we get just, we learn just as much about by what you hate as what you love, and, and so both parts of that conversation are equally We did look at the, pick up large shares of the population from both east and west of the railroads in each of these, so when we look at District Five, District Three, District Two, and where, and their, where they fall around the railroad tracks, we made choices with that in mind. So now we're moving on to map 112. Map 112 is the final NDC map, has five council districts and does meet the continuity requirement, a 3% population deviation. District Three has a 28% citizen voting age Latino population, while District Two has a 22%, and District One has a 13% Asian-American population. No council members are paired. What we really tried to do with this was create a central district, each district, East District Five spanning the railroad, and the Southern District Three spanning the railroad, so not quite as flat as the last choice. The east end of the city is entirely in District Four, while the freeway is a major division east-west. So with that, I would suggest that if there are no technical questions before you hear public comment, that we take public comment, and then I'll, I can come back up and answer any questions or help facilitate your, your discussion.
Any questions at this time? Mike Michler?
Yes, good evening, Mike Michler. You all know me, I don't know you, glad to be here tonight. I'm just giving you a heads up, I'm working on some maps at home with the software package. I have a couple I'm playing around with, they'll be submitted within the timeframe here to get into the city. And I'm giving you a heads up because the first thing is, when you look at my maps, they're going to be a little bit different than what you're seeing up here, and I wasn't smoking anything when you see these maps, so I'm just giving you a heads up, they were actually done on purpose. I'm basically going to be following what, what the contractor put in for 111. Mine's going to be a 111 map, which is the layering on steroids, it's really going to be breaking up the city. The intent, let me back up real quick. The main advantage I see in districts is to have incumbents be challenged easily, you know, it's, it's easy to challenge an incumbent with a district instead of going to all the doors and all the houses across the city, you have a smaller area. One of the problems we have is Leisure Village, where you can't, can't campaign door to door. So one of the things I'm going to be looking at in my maps is breaking up Leisure Village into two or more sections, because whoever has Leisure Village and Camaro Springs together will have a, that incumbent will have a good hard seat that'd be very difficult for someone coming in to campaign against. So that's one of the goals I'm going to have. The other thing I'm working on, one of the big disadvantages going to districts, though, is that when you break them up into home areas, and these little, most of these maps have these little neighborhood areas, the city of San Diego has a big problem with doing that method, because what happens, I'm not saying any of you are going to do this, but down the road, future council potentially members. What happens when an issue comes up, if it's in one area, usually that council member is the lead person who investigates and comes up with a recommendation, and in the city of San Diego, the other districts all kind of go along with that one lead district, and because they all want to, they all want to be the lead person in their own district. And so that's a problem. And so that's a problem. So what I'm going to be doing is splitting up the city. We also have issues with the railroad track going east, like was mentioned, because there's traffic issues east of the railroad. We also have issues with the creek, Calecas Creek, coming through there. The city has a water on the west side, as you know. Everything east is Camarosa Water District. People in Mission Oaks don't care what's happening with the city water and the city sewer and stuff, because they're not, that's a different water district and they have different issues. But my intent will be divide up layers across the whole thing and so that every council member will be near an issue that comes up. So that whatever, wherever the issue pops up, there would be council members in and around it that would be actively involved in trying to move forward with that. So I'm just giving you a heads up. Thank you.
We should not be in this situation and I blame Mr. Pirik, Mr. Tremblay, Mr. Kildy, and Mrs. Craven. Had you invoked the safe harbor clause of the CVRA, then legal fees would have been limited to $30,000. Other cities in Ventura County were able to figure this out. I don't know why you didn't. If you had, the city could have afforded to fight this. Any judge would have seen that the reasons given in the letter had no basis and it was just a shakedown using a loophole in the CVRA. I looked at the maps and was very concerned to see that the contractor developed maps did not have any city council members paired. That was information that the public didn't have necessarily available to make their maps. And I think that is unfair. But I also got to thinking, I do not remember hearing the ground rules for the election next year. So is it said in concrete that Charlotte, Sean, and Susan will remain on the council until 2022, since they were elected for four-year terms before the district's idea came in play? If so, does that mean only 2 districts vote next year? And what happens if Charlotte, Sean, or Susan are in the same district? How does that affect the election if the council chooses a configuration like that? Is there a ground rule that Charlotte, Susan, and Sean must be in separate districts since they should not be up for reelection in 2022? And is there a ground rule that Kevin and Tony will be in their own district so they can run for reelection? So, you know, it becomes very disconcerting based on certain people have information and others don't. So who's providing guidance to the demographer? And obviously, they know where each council member lives, because that's how they drafted their maps. Is there a ground rule to ensure at least one of the districts has a significant number of Hispanics, and those seem to be the numbers that were brought out as being important in the maps that were made? Is there going to be an investigation of voter registrations to ensure all those registered within the city limits are citizens and of legal voting age? It's already been made public that some people under 18 got registered and also there were some registered through the DMV system that are non-citizens. So I don't have proof of all my speculations, but I think everyone needs to go on record of what is being used as guidance in developing maps by everybody. And well, and it's obvious that the demographers are not really working independently, independently. So I think there needs to be more training on using the tools before the main ninth deadline. And an online tutorial is not acceptable. There needs to be some in-person training. So again, the previous city council failed to protect our city and our voting rights when they let the 45 days pass without action. And your excuses didn't cut it with me and a lot of people.
Good evening, City Council. And people at home. So I do have some questions here, because these are going to come up. Signing policy, are we going to be, if you run for city council, are you going to allow people to keep the same, they can put them all over the city because they may still buy gas and food? Or is there going to be some kind of committee that changes that? Signatures, when you need signatures to run for city council, are you going to allow people outside the district? Because they are hard to get a hold of. Let me remind you, some of the signatures required, you need to go to supermarket. The way this is divided up, some people would not be able to use a supermarket. So those are very valid questions. How would you get your signatures if you're not near a supermarket and you weren't in that district? Another thing I think we need to know, a lot of people are turning maps here, this could be a power structure for either Republicans or Democrats or another party. All these maps, there should be a breakdown of Republicans, Democrats, and what the party officials are, because here's the thing, you could draw maps here and actually have leverage over power. Another big difference when we're talking about these lines here, we have a newer part of the city and we're now, the way these lines are drawn, we have older parts. Well, you by no, infrastructure is going to fail based on older sections. So if you take a map and you draw a map up and you divide up newer sections versus older sections, are you going to cause problems? Because you well know that if you have 3 districts and they live in older sections, they're going to need twice as much money to repair the roads or infrastructure than the newer sections. So the newer sections may see less money if they have requirements. So those are very valid points. Nobody's talked about packing or cracking. I'm not going to go into it, I don't have time, but you should read up on that, gerrymandering. You know, these are very valid points, because lines are being drawn. We don't know who's coming up with these lines. I mean, we know they're citizens, but you've got to be very careful that we don't create a power vacuum here, because we're hooking up one party or another. But again, I think these are all valid points that should be addressed. I haven't heard anybody talk about these, because we're all worried about the map. Hey, who's in my district? Who's that district? But the point is, you do have some serious issues that need to be addressed. I hope you will address some of my concerns and some other people, because I have had people come up to me and talk to me about this, and those are valid concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council on this? I'll ask the demographer to come back up then and...
We close the public hearing.
I will close the public hearing.
Hello, I can definitely, would you like me to provide some clarifications on some of the questions that came up? Or would you like to start conversation?
You can provide some clarification.
Okay. So packing and cracking. We talked about the citizen voting age population for protected class voters. And in fact, we spent a lot of the time presenting, talking about which districts had the highest possible ability to put the most Latinos in a district. And we saw we ranged from mid-20s up to about 30 in one district. In the next district, we'd typically get from 20 to 25 and the rest would fall a little shorter than the city average, which they'd have to to balance out to 23% for Latinos, citizen voting age population. So the idea of packing, where you've got areas where I could, if I could get over 50%, but I could also get upwards of 70 or 80%, and I just put most Latinos, for example in this case, in one district rather than spreading them across 2 where they could influence elections in 2, that would... The opposite of that is called dilution or cracking. And the idea that I'm trying to draw lines that really thin out the numbers and keep it as close to that 23 average as possible to minimize the voting impact of protected class voters. And so we did spend a fair bit of time talking about the protected class voters in your community, specifically Asian Americans and Latinos, as we presented the maps. There's a little bit of discussion around gerrymandering. During the first 2 presentations, we talked about the types of gerrymandering, gerrymandering ratio being the one spelled out in the Federal Voting Rights Act. There was no attempt, and I have to say, people use the term gerrymandering and what it means in common terms is any map I don't like. So when you hear about it at the store, it's very rarely talking about racial gerrymandering as per the Federal Voting Rights Act from the 60s. It's more talking about, I think you saved your seat and I don't like it. The courts have, the federal and state courts have upheld the idea that it's perfectly within your purview to consider incumbency, meaning not to draw yourself out of a seat. The citizens, the electorate put you in your seat and it should probably be they, to the extent possible, that decide whether or not you've earned to keep it or not. And so that should happen at the next election. None of your terms will be cut short by this process. By the very nature of the law, that's not allowable. Older versus newer, that's actually a pretty good policy conversation. Certainly, we've got new developments, new infrastructure. You're probably not going to spend as much money out of the budget on that and that's a good policy conversation to have. Great point there. We did not produce or include or use in our maps any voting habits, so whether you're a party affiliation in drawing the maps, we didn't provide the information for that. Is that obtainable? Can somebody go get that? Absolutely. But we are not providing that as a resource for this process, because this was not brought out publicly as a left-right Republican-Democrat process. There's been no attempt in drawing districts that I've seen in and out evaluating what's been submitted or in NDC's maps to try to pack one party or the another for each council member, because we didn't use that data in doing so.
And they're nonpartisan elections.
Right, but we didn't pull voter self-identification data and try to see which areas have higher amounts and see how that might fit your leanings. There was no effort to do any of that and I just want to be very clear with that, because that is not an uncommon innuendo. Regarding elections and process to run, if you were to try to get, try to get onto the ballot for a seat, you would need to get signatures from within your district. So it doesn't mean you can't go to the grocery store, it just means you have to ask, do you live in this area, before you ask them to sign the sheet? Which does not make it easier, especially if you don't have a grocery store in your district. But it's certainly a concern if anybody wants to run. Okay, so there's that, that, that. So we talked about incumbency. Whether or not you consider that in the final map selection is up to you, but it is one of the possible choices, just like communities of interest. So one of your community members talked about socioeconomics and talked about pairing different housing tracks together. Those ideas are all around communities of interest and those are just as valid as the idea of incumbency, under the eyes of the law and they have been fully adjudicated in the courts. You have no legal threat there. Terms will be changed. So sequencing, this is a very difficult conversation. I typically try to ask councils to wait until they've narrowed down their map sets to talk about sequencing, because it is possible to have sequencing where you prevent somebody from running. So if I'm a 2020 seat and my district is voted on by the council to be scheduled in 2022, at the end of 2020, my seat's up and I can't run for 2 years. That's possible. That happens. We try to advise, as a matter of policy, against that, but in the end, the council will make the decisions on what districts come up on which election. It just can't be done in a way that shortens anybody's seat. So for example, the 2 council members that will be up at the next election will be running for their district seat while the remaining council members stay at large till the end of their term in 2020. Then they will run for a council district seat in 2020 on the next version of the map.
Be 2022?
2022, I'm sorry, yes. So 2020 will be the first set, they will, those council members will go from at-large to their districts, while the other 2 remain at-large. Then in 2022, the final 2 council members, or the final 3 will go to districts from at-large seats. So we just try not to get too far down that rabbit hole until we've narrowed down our map choices, because we could be talking about hundreds of options. So once we get down to 2 or 3 choices, that really kind of helps us talk through the much more finite set of choices. So I think I've covered the open questions that came up.
Okay, so now we'll get comments from, any comments that are questions we would have for either you and/or staff?
Absolutely.
Okay, are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Tremblay?
But stay with that hypothetical, because in 2022, there actually would be new maps. So you could have redrawn or revised districts, even within the 2 council members, assuming that hypothetical, elected in 2020, who would now actually be in slightly different districts.
Absolutely, but their term cannot be ended early.
Got it, thanks.
Any other questions? No? Okay, so what would be the procedure now then? I don't believe we have any more questions of you or and/or staff that I'm aware of, so...
Any conversation that the council's willing to have about what they like or dislike about certain maps, or if there was a map that, gosh, got really close to something I think I might be interested in, or a couple of council members might be interested in, with just these 1 or 2 little changes, this would be a great time to hear it, because we can bring those changes back to the next meeting as a 101A alternative, for example. So if there is a conversation to be had, now would be the time. You don't have to. You can wait till you get some more new maps and we do this again. You really have 12 policy maps to look at, but only 7 can move forward from a possible adoption perspective. So you don't have to, but you can discuss if you're interested.
Yeah. We still have a future meetings that maps very well could be submitted that have not been submitted up to this point.
Correct. And I would definitely look for direction from the council to remove Maps 102, 105, 106, 107, and 108 from consideration as adoptable.
Sorry, 102, 10...
5, 106, 107, and 108. In one criteria or another, they didn't meet the criteria laid out by the council as far as what they're looking for, adoptable maps. Some have legal challenge concerns. And so we would suggest that we move forward with the remaining 7 maps. Doesn't take them out, these 5 maps, out of your ability to look at them, look at policy conversations and discussions, it just means you're not moving them forward for potential adoption.
Okay, we do have, before you go, we do have a question, Mr. Tremblay?
Just as a follow-up, I understand that with respect to 102, 105, 106, 108, are you recommending deleting 107 from consideration because of the concern on the dilution of the Latino population? That's what I thought I heard you say, but I want to make sure I...
And the jump...
And the concern about defensibility.
Yes. Legal, so each of these, some are for district, which didn't meet the criteria you laid out.
Right.
The 2 have a continuity issue and then, those 2 being 102 and 106. 105 and 108 have 4 districts and 10...
7.
7 has both a concern around dilution and around the way Area 1 jumps right up by where 2 and 3 come together.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
The council is, it is within your purview if you'd like to narrow down more, because any narrowing you do will be a signal to anybody drawing maps. So for example, you heard from, I think it was Mr. Mishler, I may have written his name down incorrectly, but he spoke about his drawing a map close to 111 on steroids. You know, certainly anything you do that narrows this down may provide guidance for anybody who does want to draw future maps, because they'll really be honing in on the policy conversation you're having. Not obligated to do so, but it is an option for you.
Okay. All right, so council, do we want to address any of these issues that have been brought up and/or start the discussion on this process here?
I'll start it. Frankly, I like, I like Map 109. I mean, I think it, it looks like it has areas that would be easy for one person to I understand the idea of layering, as Mr. Mishler said, but if you look at, I think it was 107, which we've taken out because it wasn't contiguous or was questionable, it really seems to me that a map that's like this, that has something that goes completely across the bottom and then all the way across the top, even if it were, shall we say, thicker at one point, maybe followed Los Poses or something, that it would be hard for one, if you're trying to get something compact where one person represents a group of people, it just seems to me that if they're geographically close, it's easier to represent them. Easier for them to call you, to get out there and talk. And I understand Camero isn't a big city and we're representing everything now, but if you're going to make it smaller, I think it should be so that the people feel in your, they, each district feel connected in some way. And even though 107 was supposedly designed with socioeconomics in mind, I don't think that the people up in Spanish Hills feel any way connected to the people over adjacent to Santa Rosa Road. So I, I like 109. I like it better than, and it was an anonymous one, I like it better than, say, 110, that was drawn by the consultant. Um. Each area is fairly compact and arranged kind of by neighborhoods, although that, people might pick a hole with that adjective I used, but I don't know another word to use for it. 110, I think, again, has the, has the ones on the right grouped together, and then you've got the two on the west kind of sprawling throughout town. And that, somehow in my mind, it doesn't make sense to me. So those, those are my comments on those. We're also considering 101, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
101, I didn't realize so much of the population was concentrated in, in that 2 and 3 area that the other areas would be so large, especially with all of the construction that's coming online in the next year out in the west. I just didn't, it didn't, didn't look population-wise balanced to me, but I guess maybe it is. We're not doing 104, 105, 106, 107, and 108, is that right?
101, 103, 104, 10-
Oh, we're considering 104. I wrote that down wrong, then.
Was the, was the table included by staff? The, was the table included in the packet? The table, was the table included in the packet that had kind of a summary of all three? So what we did was we divide on the top the ones that we suggest moving forward and the ones on the bottom for discussion, but that would not move forward. We'll make sure this is included in the next packet because sometimes it helps.
Is it in here? I didn't see it. Oh.
Okay. It's a, it's a tool I use because it makes for a great speaking tool, but we can certainly include it, especially since you have more than 10 maps, it makes it easier to look at so many. So 103 would be the next one. You just discussed 101.
My comments, the same. I just didn't realize that, that number 2 and 3 area were so densely populated. I'm not visualing, visualizing where all the population is compared to the other geographic areas. I mean, and it seems that, that area number 4 kind of goes out of its way to leave a peninsula there in the middle.
Pretty common population balancing tool. You either have to pick a north half, a south half, or go up a middle, and, and so-
It just seems like number, number 5 is stuck right there in the middle of number 4.
Sure.
Which, I'm looking at it as not a council member representing these necessarily, but a person who is going to say, oh, I want to talk to my, my city council member who represents me, and you're on one side of one of these streets and somebody else is on the other side, and you have two different, two different members, and I know that'd be all over, but this just seems like it's really a weird way to divide up numbers 4 and 5 to me.
And-
So if I could point out one benefit of the tool, which this, this is available to,
from, from your districting website on your city's page, is any member of your community can put in their address on each map and see exactly where they live. So if they're close to a line, they can put in their address and zoom in and know for sure for each one of the mapping choices there, which might be helpful for discussion when you're at the supermarket.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I already said, I think I got through, we're not discussing 5, 6, 7, and 8, is that correct?
That is correct.
5, 6, 7, 8.
Well, you can discuss-
We can discuss them, but we're, we're not considering them as presented.
We're not-
For various reasons.
They couldn't be adopted.
They couldn't be adopted.
But you can discuss any policy implications or notes that you liked or disliked in their creation.
Okay. So that got me to 9. I've already said I like 9. I don't like 10 as well, and, oh, I didn't like 11 as well because of the, so I'm going to let somebody else talk. I've given you mine.
Ms. Santangelo?
So first, I wanted to start out by saying that I believe all our addresses are public record, so if you want to map out where we live in relation to the districts, you can go ahead and do that. I also want to just speak personally to the idea of grouping incumbents in the districts, and it probably sounds as if each one of us is biased if we say that we don't want to pair people up in a district, and you can think that. I, actually, I really agree with the way you put it, that I believe that if you were elected, then you ought to be able to run again and let the people decide if they want to reelect you, and that's my basis for wanting to, as much as possible, try to keep us out of the same districts. So that being said, I'm just going to quickly go through, because I know there's a few more of us to talk. So I do like Map 101, but it does put three council members in one district, and I see that as a real problem. I also think about, I know we have to look at the density of population, but District 1 is huge.
Yeah.
And, you know, in terms of campaigning, that could be a disadvantage. 103, eh, I don't know why. It seemed, it's not as compact as I'd like it to be. I don't know why I'm drawn to maps that are more compact, which I think is what Mrs. Craven was alluding to as well.
You do or do not like 103?
Not really.
Okay.
104, I know that you said like that peninsula-ing, is that a word? Is, is normal in districting, but it just seems very odd to me. I, in my mind, I want the, yeah, I want-
District 1.
I want the districts to make sense somehow, and this one doesn't. I also like 109 very much, and, yeah, right now, 109 would be my, my first choice. I think it makes sense geographically. I think it uses some natural boundaries. I think it's fairly compact. It makes sense to me, and I also like the way the, the Latino population works out and the Asian population. What was 110?
That's sprawling top district.
Yeah, 110 would probably be my second choice. I think I just, with Map 111, I think I have to get used to, and I'm going to try to do this before Mr. Mishler's maps come in, with the, with the horizontal. I think I just have to kind of let that sink in a little bit more because I'm, I guess I'm looking for, you know, that compactness, but I can see the points he raised, and I can see why this also can work, so that's, those are my thoughts where I am right now.
112, do you have a thought, thought on 112?
Oh, that's the, um, I'm okay with that one. I like that one.
Okay.
Not as much. I think, yeah, 109 is my first choice.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else ready to go? Anybody else ready?
Yeah, I'll make some general comments. But I'm kind of, one of the things I'm looking for, I want something that seems natural. The other two council members, I've already kind of spoken to this, but something that seems natural and intuitive to the voter, that they can easily identify their district and who the representative is, and it just, by looking at the map, it kind of just, it makes, you know, it makes sense. So yeah, something, something simple, there was something that Mrs. Craven brought up pretty early on, and that was the idea that as many districts touch the 101 freeway, because that is a pain point in our community, rightly so, and it's a pain that maybe each of us should share in.
And then I didn't choose that map.
Yeah. But I generally like that concept. Not grouping, I really, I personally want to stay away from having a district that is almost wholly south of the 101. I don't want, I don't want this north and south thing to go on. If there, if we can have three or four districts jump the 101, and we can, we can try to represent both the north and the south, all the better. I can hear Game of Thrones references being thrown about right now in my head. An observation in looking at all these maps, we, we up here spoke about how we felt like Lewis and the railroad track was kind of a natural divider, and it was really surprising that a lot of people, to my surprise too, because I completely agree with that, but a lot of people jumped that, what we thought was kind of a natural divide. Every single map, to varying degrees, but a lot, considerably more than what I thought they, they naturally would. So I think that was just kind of an observation as to maybe what other people are thinking. In regards to maps, I don't necessarily disagree with a lot of what my colleagues have already said. I like certain elements of 101, like the general thoughts of 101, 109, 110 particularly. I'm not really committed to any one particular thing right now. I'm really interested to see what Mike's map on steroids looks like, and whatever other kind of creative approaches that residents take. By all means, I don't, I don't necessarily want to put too many limits on some people's creativity and their, and their thought process behind the map, so I'm not, I'm a little less, I'm a little hesitant to really say this is what I want because I probably don't honestly really know what I want until I really see it, and we have further discussion and more maps come in.
Well, definitely, that would be premature. One of the things I'm trying to see if there's a consensus around any that we're just not feeling, and that doesn't make a map good or bad, it's just from a policy perspective. So, you know, certainly you expressed your desire to move forward with 101, 109, 110. We've had less than favorable comments around 103 and 104. If you agree, then now we have a majority of the council, but not saying those maps are in any way invalid or bad, they just don't meet some of the policy considerations that you're, you're looking at, and that, that's a way to help kind of whittle this down as well. So I don't want to say somebody not liking the map is, is a bad thing. It helps facilitate the process, and it's not a slight on any creator's effort.
Yeah. I do, I do echo Ms. Craven's sentiment in like saying, in referencing Map 107, albeit very creative. I agree that the people on Spanish Hills probably don't have the same things in common or issues in common with the people who live far, the far end of Mission Oaks. You know, to where the maps don't look, and I'm going to use the term because everyone else is using it, and that's what we all know, but gerrymandered. I know it's incorrect, but that's the term everyone has kind of applied to it, but it's something that looks a little bit more natural, and like I said, intuitive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Tremblay, would you like me?
First of all, I, I think we need to narrow down, narrow down the, the, the maps tonight, but I am looking forward to hearing and receiving some additional maps. I know in addition to Mr. Mishler, I think there's at least one other community member who intends to submit maps. I'm looking forward to seeing those, and from anybody else. So I don't want to, I want to narrow us down because I think that's the best thing to do, but I don't want to preclude anything from May, for our May meeting. Sequencing, well, I'll get, I'll get to sequencing because we're not there yet, I don't want to digress. With regard to how I looked at it, I really, aside from focusing on, aside from the three mandatory criteria which are given, and right now I'm on the staff report on, on page A2, I focused on the optional criteria, and I certainly agree with Ms. Santangelo and Ms. Craven's and Mr. Mishler's comments, particularly Ms. Santangelo regarding the pairing issue. But I also looked, and I really tried to adhere to geography, cohesiveness, and compactness of territory, as well as what, and it's subjective, what the communities of interest are within specific districts. And sometimes you get to communities of interest by looking at compactness, and sometimes not, but, but it's a helpful, it's a helpful tool. So for those, and, and I also keep in mind too, that communities of interest, there are several factors, including who receives water service from who. There is a certain portion of town that receives water from the city of Camarillo, and a certain portion of town that receives water from Camarosa, and that's, that's something that we have to, in my opinion, keep in mind. I, Sean phrased it right. I like, but I'm not saying, but, but there are certain ones that I feel a preference for. I feel a preference for, or at least inclined toward, without selecting, 109 and 110. 104, to me, is, is, is really interesting, and I'm not quite sure where I come down on that yet, but 104, I think it does leave, I think Ms. Craven said it, it leaves a peninsula. At least, that's a comment that I wrote down. And I also think, as Susan indicated, with no disparagement of the author, I'm, I'm struggling with District number 1 because it just doesn't make a lot-
[laughing]
Well, but I'm trying to say it in a way that doesn't disparage the frame or the map, but I have some difficulty with that. So I'm, I'm sort of looking at 104 with interest. I, I don't think I would favor or prefer 101, 103, 111, or 112. Principally, those, those preferences have to do with optional criteria, it's two, numbers 2, 3, and 4, as I articulated before I set out on my numbers. So that's ram.
That's very helpful.
All right. Well, I kind of looked at this from, I think, the future of, I could be wrong on this, but I think the future of the elections with the districting is going to be, are you able to walk your district? And with that criteria, among other criteria that I looked at, my feeling is that the districts that you can explain to constituents the easiest are going to be something that we might want to strongly consider. So I look at the compaction there. So as I looked at that, it would appear to me that Map 19, 109, and 110 are that. The first one, 101, I understand what they were trying to do, but I just think that geographically, that's going to be a challenge, and I think a lot of it kind of spills over from Union Pacific over to the westerly and to, I'd like to see that a little bit more compact with the east and the west here, because I think it is important, as was brought up, that there's a separate water district there, and there's some unique attributes to eastern Camarillo here. 102 wasn't-
Could we ask?
The peninsula 105, I think that's been, that's been discussed here, that would be. So from what's been said, I think that, you know, my thoughts are, as of right now, knowing that there more than likely would be other maps submitted, the 109 and 110. Is that, is that helpful here?
It is.
Yes.
And so what I'm seeing is, I didn't hear anybody passionate about 103. That, that might be one we could look at. We have mixed reviews on 101. 104, we have one person that's warm on it, but kind of open. 109 seems fairly popular, 110 fairly popular. 111, I think, it only seemed like we had one person that had kind of, that was warm about it, and 112, we only had one person warm on it, unless I missed-
I think we had a comment from Mr. Tremblay.
Well, I had a comment, and I don't think I'm passionate about it, but I do think that, trying to decide what- that, trying to decide what adjective I want to use, but anyway, I, I, I had some issues with 103, because I didn't think it addressed communities of interest as well as some others. So it's, without being passionate about it, but it's something that I, I would be skeptical about supporting.
And so if there's generally, you know, four out of five are just not really warming up to a particular map, that is a good way to, a good criteria, because once you've met the legal requirements, and you start talking about can somebody walk it, well, that is definitely a primary concern of the Voting Rights Act, is can somebody challenge a seat? So those are, these are great policy conversations you're having. When you get down into the, the traditional criteria, when you start balancing some of the other criteria, communities of interest, well, that becomes a little more subjective, and no matter what you say, somebody's going to have an argument, but it is your choice to make at that point.
Follow.
I have one other, oh, sorry.
What's that? I don't know if we've really addressed this question, but, and this is actually for both you and for Mr. Perick, but does it make a difference relative to the criteria where you've got, there is a, you know, a large area of town, so for example, in 109, and one, and one, at least in 109, there, there are certain areas of the city where you cannot walk, you can't get into those developments. So Leisure Village, you cannot walk, as you would traditionally do. And I had, you know, one candidate at the last election, not mine, but it, but, you know, be very vocal about saying this isn't, this isn't right. And I think there are certain areas, and Barbara can certainly correct me if I'm, go wrong, as I usually do, there may be areas of Camarillo Springs where you can't walk either. And so, so does that make a difference judicially, or defend, from a defensibility standpoint on adoption of maps? As far as I know, it does not, because, you know, there's, for example, if you were looking at this, to pick a map, 109, I mean, that one, that's got Leisure Village in one district, and Camp Springs in another, so I am not aware of any law that would provide that the walkability is, you know, criteria for a particular, to select one map over another. But I've made a note of it, and I'll certainly look into it, and can come back to you at your meeting on May 22nd, to let you know for sure if that is something that can be considered or not.
So I can add to that just, just a little. Part of the reason you have a, a list of traditional criteria is because no individual criteria will stand on its own. Within every community, I can poke holes at any one of those criteria throughout an entire community. So what you do is create a list, and you, you as a council, you as a community, are trying to balance that list for the best possible outcome, but each individual criteria short from equal population according to the 2010 census, and don't crack or pack, dilution, essentially. The traditional criteria are balanced, they're not perfect individually.
As I said, one of the candidates in the last election made, talked to me about it, and, and was, was really concerned about that, and I guess, in, if you, on one hand, what happens in, in, when you have that situation is, by going to districts, it actually exacerbates that problem, no, exacerbates that challenge for candidates who are running in that district versus having it large. But I also understand the countervailing argument, which is whoever is running in that district has the same challenge. Multiple candidates have that same challenge, so, but I, I, I think what I want to pose it to you is, I want to pose it to you from a voting rights standpoint. My gut is telling me that there is, that there is not a defensibility issue on it, but I'd certainly be interested in, in knowing, and it's, I hasten to add, it's not because I'm complaining about it, because I know where I live, I know where I'm situated, but I'm just curious about that. So, thanks.
From a selection perspective, it's not a, a concern.
Okay.
Unless council comes up with something that we have yet to come across.
Well, it's happened before, but we'll see. I, I will look into it and have an answer for certain at your next meeting.
Ms. Craven?
I'm sorry, I have two other comments, and one is that I think in every district there are places, they're, they're not as well-known maybe as Camarillo Springs and, and Leisure Village is not being able to get in, but many of the apartment buildings do not allow people in. There are gated communities in many other parts of town that are smaller. So I think that, that that kind of a problem is in, in, a challenge, you know, it isn't a problem, I mean, I had a low-budget campaign, but I sent letters to those people. But at any rate, what I, the other comment I wanted to say is, for people who are going to be drawing maps, could you put either 101 or 103 up, please? The big problem I have with this is that little triangle down in the middle, and other, other maps had that too, and that's separated by Lewis Road, it's down there by itself, I don't see anything that would make those people think they should be in that top, I'm looking at a different map, I have it as number two, it's number three up there on, on the screen, but I, I just, you know, it, it's in the idea of compactness, and I think that somebody went down there, or several people went down and picked up that little triangle, so that they could get the numbers. That triangle is going to be very, very populated within the next, that's the 3M site, it looks like to me, within the next couple of, well, by the end of the year, I'm sure people will be in those apartments.
Currently, there's zero voting population in that triangle.
But isn't that where there's a lot under construction?
If you select the layers and scroll down to the bottom, you'll see the census population.
Well, I'm just looking at how, how many places are being built there right now, if it's where I think it is.
Mr. Clifford? If you click on the layers and scroll down, you, I'm sorry, up on the layers tab, up top, right there, and scroll down, you'll see the census population right there. And if we, if we zoom into that triangle down at the bottom, we'll actually be able to see the population numbers within that, within each of those areas. No, yeah, there we go. So we see that there's zero population currently in that, in those triangle areas.
But I'm saying by the end of the year, there are going to be a lot of people, isn't, isn't that where they're building?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that, that triangle is on the.
On the other side.
West side of Lewis.
On the west side of Lewis, okay, I was mistaken, I'm sorry.
And, and so we could be instructed to move that into one of the west or east adjoining.
If there's nobody there, I, I just have a problem with putting a little triangle of anything off by itself that, that wouldn't make any sense.
But if it's all commercial, you would never have any voters in that area, and I think it is.
Then why can't it go in one of the others?
I wonder if it was an oversight, because it was zero.
If it doesn't have anybody, it could be in either one of those others.
Okay.
Anyway, that was the point I was trying to make.
All right, so.
Would there be a, a policy conversation between putting it in one or four, one over the other?
No.
No.
We, we know the law, but we'll never know the, the heart and soul of your community like you do, that's, that's part of why we do this process.
It does, I think it does too.
If it's on the west side of Dawson, is that what you said? If it's on the west side of Dawson, it should go on the one on the west.
That's Lewis. Isn't that Lewis?
Which moves that, okay, so is there any, do you have?
Doesn't matter.
I mean, the, the highway is a little more major highway to the, do you have a question?
That's Lewis.
To the east, so maybe, maybe it makes sense to put it into one versus four?
Yeah.
If the highway is, is a barrier you prefer.
That's Lewis Road.
It's Lewis, I think so, yeah.
I was just going to observe, I, I have, I have other issues with 101, but I understand what you're doing from, from that standpoint, but I, like I said, I, I have other issues, particularly with regard to compactness and integrity of community, and community of interest. So my view would be not to proceed with, with doing that with 101, but if three of us think that's, we ought to do it, then by all means.
Oh.
I know I don't prefer that.
Well, the ones that we seem to like, when we got down to the ones we actually liked, didn't have everybody going down across 101. 109 just has three districts going across 101. So.
Did you get, so, to me, I have some other issues with, are we talking about 101 now? Can you bring that up? Because I have some other issues, I didn't particularly care for the fact that District Three spilled over into the Mission Oaks area. It was one of my issues with that.
I don't think anybody liked it.
Okay, so, do you have, do you have enough data tonight?
Are, are, is there a consensus that any of the maps could go away at this point?
I think we had talked about 102, 105, 106, and 107, and 108, did we not?
Correct, so of the remaining seven that we have available.
101.
101.
103, didn't seem to get.
No, yes.
Okay, 104, thoughts?
104, the council.
We don't like that way, it's divided, between one and two.
112 didn't seem very popular.
No, that's right.
Sometimes we get just as much from the stuff we don't like.
Oh, Tony.
Looking back at my notes on 111, sorry.
I hadn't, so, I had one member, Ms. Santangelo, was lukewarm on 112, 111, 112, I believe. But if that's just, if it's half of one, then, you know.
I think 111 was, yeah.
Well, if you're lukewarm, I mean, I, I would, not trying to place words in your mouth, but.
I would have 111 go away.
Yeah, I would too.
I would too.
The remaining members comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
So it looks like we would be moving forward with 109 and 110. This is exactly what I was hoping for in this process.
Then we're going to be getting more in.
Well, no, you're, you're going to get more maps, you're going to continue the conversation, but if you don't, if you, if you think you can't.
Oh, that's right.
Elect some version of some of these maps, there's no reason to move them forward, but we've, we've got lots of notes about policy conversations that are feeding this, we'll provide a summary in the notes, and then when it comes time to pick one, you'll.
Now, also, on the agenda, does, address the sequencing, do we need to talk about that?
Well, knowing that you're going to get new maps next time, we can, I'm prepared to. So if we pull this sequencing, we did provide a sequencing chart.
I had understood from your earlier comments that you thought that the sequencing discussion should wait until.
The very end typically.
Until the end, when, which would be at the next hearing.
That makes some sense.
I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to hear from me.
Well, it is worth, and it would be worth the council's time to take a look, since we're moving forward with 109 and 110, so the rest will be in your packet as not moving forward, but still available for discussion, and we'll, we'll rearrange the chart for all the community members if they wanted, for the online viewer, but certainly getting a familiarization of what's possible. So we recommended, for example, the election sequencing for 109 and 110 in here, and this observes the, where each council member lives and their current election sequence as, as, as of today. So please look at it and make sure that we didn't put somebody in the wrong year, because where the conversation gets really, really uncomfortable for councils, is when you've got two members with different election dates in the same district, because somebody is going to feel like they lost, or they will, because they're either be, not be able to rerun for the, for the by district, either they may have to wait two years, or, or, well, yeah, or get ousted essentially.
So what happened in Moore Park?
It's, it's happened in many places.
Yeah.
So it's, the, the relationship among the council helps with some of that, and picking maps that doesn't pair council members helps with that.
Well, to get back to my point though, if there's going to be more maps that come in, and we don't know what they're going to look like, Mr. Michler's indicated he's going to be submitting some, and I thought I heard some council members saying that they'd possibly heard there might be more maps, wouldn't it make most sense to have the sequencing discussion with all those maps?
Absolutely, I just wanted to point out that this was in the packet, and we've really narrowed down to two, so if they just want to be familiar with what's in there, so when we start talking about new maps, hopefully it's less, just less volume of material to try to digest and make important decisions about on the spot.
Okay.
So. It's in the board packet.
It's online in the board packet.
Okay, so, now, the suggested action, we've done one and two, we're going to, my understanding, we're going to wait for three until a future meeting, and then we're going to confirm the next public meeting for May 22nd, 2019, is that correct?
Yes.
Would we have to do a motion on that?
It's already set.
I think you've already provided, that we've received public comments, you've provided direction on preferred maps, I think on the comments on sequencing, since there's additional maps coming in, I had understood that from the speaker, as well as the council, that you're going to wait on the sequencing discussion until your next meeting, and confirming that the public hearing is going to be on May 22nd. I don't see any of these as being a motion, and it looks like those have all been, all those bases have been touched.
Sean, do you have a question? Yeah, for, for clarification, for those watching, or who may watch this, if the next hearing, we're going to go through this process again on May 22nd, what is the deadline for those wanting to submit maps for the May 22nd hearing? What is the deadline that they need to get their respective maps in?
Tony has that, if you.
The deadline is May 9th at 5:00 PM.
May 9th at 5:00 PM. Okay? I just want to, I just want to emphasize that as much as possible.
Proceed.
And let me emphasize something else that's in the staff report at the bottom of page A3 and the top of page A4. Further, any change, and I'm reading, quote, "Further, any changes to a map under consideration for adoption at the May 22 meeting would require republication of any revised map within seven days prior to adoption of the map and introduction of the ordinance." Thus, and here's the take-home message, "Changes at the May 22 meeting, if any, would not permit the city council to follow the currently, currently selected schedule, and would require at least one additional meeting of the city council." I just think that's important for the, for, as a reminder to us, and also to the public at large, so they're aware.
Okay, so with that, that gets us down to B, it's a municipal stormwater NPDS management permit, do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. This is an annual process by which council is requested to adopt a resolution, requesting that the county board of supervisors continue to levy an assessment of $5 per what's called the benefit assessment unit, essentially equal to a single detached housing unit for the upcoming fiscal year. This benefit assessment unit is, and has been in place to offset costs related to managing the municipal stormwater NPDS permit countywide, and the city participates in that program. The benefit assessment units for the city will remain basically at the same level as previous fiscal year, slight increase, but the number is approximately 31,316 units, at $5 per unit generating almost $157,000 for the next fiscal year. The city participates in the countywide stormwater management program because we are under NPDS permit, and the, the permit that we're under is actually an extension of a permit that had expired back in 2015. And we expect the regional board to release a draft of the next permit towards the end of this year. I believe that was the same information I gave last year at this time for this item. The regional board is slow in moving forward with the release of the next draft permit. However, the assessment here continues, and again, this is a, this standard annual process to allow the. to allow the county to continue to levy the assessment. As I mentioned, the $5 per parcel fee will generate nearly $157,000. And that will come to Camarillo and partially offset the cost of our stormwater program. Our estimated budget for the next fiscal year is nearly $1.5 million. That information, both the cost and this revenue coming from the benefit assessment is, will be reflected in the proposed fiscal year 1920 budget. That's simply what the action is here tonight, annual process, and that completes my report.
Any questions at this time?
Just a point of clarification. So we're not raising anything. We're simply renewing the fee that's already in place.
That's correct. Yep, this is a, an assessment that's been in place for quite a few years and is restricted to any changes without going through a Prop 218 process. So that's what it's set at and will continue at that level. Thank you.
Any other questions? Advertise public hearing, open the public hearing. Anybody like to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing no one go forward, I will close the public hearing and I'll ask.
Your Honor, I'll move to adopt a resolution authorizing a $5 assessment per BAU for inclusion into the benefit assessment program of the Ventura County Watershed Protection District.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion here? Now, please vote. That passes unanimously. Let's see, that gets us down to new business oral communication. Mr. City Manager?
No comments.
Mr. City Attorney?
No comments.
City Council, who would like? Sean, do you want to start tonight? Are you good?
Sure, yep. Give me one second. Let me get to my notes here. It's actually been a rather busy two weeks. So since we last met, on Thursday, April 11, I attended a Camarillo Airport Authority meeting. Got to meet the new director of airports, very great, seems like a genuinely good guy, well-informed, smart. Looking forward to seeing what he's going to bring.
A nice southern accent.
Yeah, yeah.
[laughing]
No, I like his accent. Wednesday, April, actually, I should note that I was out of town that Friday and over the weekend as well. So I had every intention, had I not been out of town, of attending volunteer appreciation for the library as long as their, the book event with Mr. Fink. So I was actually, it was kind of disappointing that I was able, I missed that. On Wednesday, April 17, along with my colleagues here, I attended the groundbreaking for the Home to Suites in the Embassy Hotel, the convention center across from the promenade. Thursday, April 18, attended a special closed session here in council chambers. Friday, April 19, had a Camarillo Ranch Committee meeting with Mrs. Craven. Monday, April 22, in the morning, I went and volunteered at the ranch house. The Camarillo Ranch Foundation is putting on, is selling excess furnishings that have been donated. They're not, nothing from the Camarillo family, but donations that they have received over however many years. And they're looking to do some house cleaning. And so the ones that aren't necessarily relevant to the time period in which they're supposed to depict and/or just stuff it's been kind of collecting over the years, they're, they're selling that. I think it, they had the first day today and the second day tomorrow in the barn during Throwback Thursday in the evening. So anyone interested in perusing that can do so. I helped them move all the stuff down from the attic. There's quite a bit of stuff in that attic. In the evening, I attended the Caltrans-VCTC Community Input Session regarding proposed improvement projects for the US 101. That's from the 23 in Thousand Oaks to the 33 in Ventura. And it was lively. It was, it was actually a really good input session. I really enjoyed that. I enjoyed the information. I think the public got, had an opportunity to ask a lot of questions. One thing, one of the coordinators had said, because they've had three other community input sessions prior to this one, this is the fourth and last one of this round, they had said that more people attended the Camarillo session over at the Camarillo Library than the three previous sessions combined. I believe they had those, I may have it wrong, I think they had one in Ventura, Oxnard, and Thousand Oaks or Westlake area. So I thought that was, that was, that was great. Either that's a testament that we have an engaged community, or that traffic on the 101 is really horrible going through Camarillo.
You know, it was exactly the same when they widened it to three lanes from two lanes. More people went to the community meeting in Camarillo than all the others put together.
So, and there will be continued opportunities for input during this process too, for the, for public watching at home or listening. Tuesday, April 23, yesterday, I attended the Camarillo Ranch Ad Hoc Committee meeting with Mrs. Craven, along with representatives of the CRF and staff. That evening, or yesterday evening, I also attended the Senior Center, Community Center, Community Workshop that was hosted by PVRPD at the Community Center. There was some good input there. Looking forward to the next one here, I believe, in May?
June 6.
June 6. I'm sorry, I don't want to misquote. I don't have it written down. I'm sure we'll be publicizing along with the Wreckin' Park District. So for people at home watching, if you have, you know, an interest in your local, the Senior Center and the Community Center, and revamping that, that project, by all means, please come and participate. Give your two cents. And then today, along with Mrs. Craven, I attended the Investment and the Finance Committee meetings. We had a pre-audit meeting with the auditors, and they will commence their, the auditing process here shortly, and with anticipation of bringing the results in December. Lastly, I just want to reemphasize, we are coming into summer, albeit, I know we got a lot of rain, but if you look at those hillsides now, and it was only a few weeks ago, they looked like the mountains in Maui, and they're already starting to gray, or not gray, I'm sorry, they're already starting to brown. And, you know, the rain has come and now it's gone. And that, along with everything else that kind of exists here, will, will start to become a fire danger again. Brush fires or wildfires are very real in our region, obviously. The Ventura County Fire Department had put out a press release, and I just want to reemphasize their press release, encouraging people who have brush adjacent to, or on or adjacent to their property to work in clearing that brush, be proactive in clearing that brush. So that way we can mitigate any chance of any potential fires as we head into, as we are in dry season and we're heading into the summer. And if it's anything like past summers, it's going to be hot and it's going to be dry. So, that is all I got.
Ms. Craven, anything tonight?
Mr. Trembley.
Oh, Mr. Trembley, would you like to have anything tonight?
I would.
How could I have overlooked you?
Hey, yes, no problem.
Actually, I have some things on meetings attended, but then on a couple of issues I want to bring up. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meetings attended. April 11, together with Ms. Craven, was the, our liaison committee with Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District on the Senior Center, Community Center project. Did a, covered the mayor on a ribbon cutting at Flatfish Brewing Co. I can't pronounce that five times fast.
Thank you for that.
Katara Cellars. And a nice event. On April 12, I also pinch hit for the mayor on an event at the Sarah Center for the National Association of Women Business Owners. And it was a very, it was the NABO Ventura County Awards. And we had one Camarillo resident, Brenda Turgeon of Turgeon Construction, who received Member of the Year award. And that was, that was really great. Did have, did, was able to attend the volunteer recognition event at Camarillo Library. That was excellent. The drumming group that performed for the volunteers, I thought, was outstanding. On April 13, was privileged to represent council at an Eagle Court of Honor for Quinton Hall of Troop 225. And I want you to know, this is a scout that did a project at Camarillo Grove Park, up on, up on the hill, up above Camarillo Grove Park. And that area was burned out in the hillfire. He is, as you probably saw on the acorn, he is planning on redoing that project. And he is raising money to do it. And I really commend an Eagle Scout for going back and wanting to redo his project once again. I think that's great. April 17, the Me and Conference Center groundbreaking. On April 18, I attended the AWA Water Symposium, the annual water symposium that goes on. Jeffrey, I'm going to have a number of things to give to you at the end here, but it really included a, a very good discussion, a panel discussion on how you identify shared objectives and you, and you craft agreements among multiple users. Because you've got farmers, environmentalists, quote unquote, or fish and wildlife concerns and interests, and then M and I are cities. And it's how to go about doing that. One of the speakers is a former client, Jason Phillips, who's the chief executive officer of Freyent Water Authority in the Central Valley that I used to represent. And he was quite good. But in that vein, the California Public Policy Institute that I know all of you are aware of, one of the individuals from PPI spoke. And PPI is a, is independent, objective, nonpartisan. And they have a whole set of briefing papers. And in particular, I'm going to give this, I picked up an extra copy for Jeffrey, but in particular, I would appreciate if you might be able to make copies for council members on any of the topics they want. But in particular, the ones that are entitled Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta, Water for Cities, Water for the Environment, and Water for Farms. And I think the discussion is balanced and reasonable. And particularly, since we're still confronted with our Desalter decision, the Desalter project's now out to bid, these are good things, these are good briefing materials to keep in mind. Same date, April 18, there was an Economic Development Collaborative Board Meeting. And Sean, you were, hit the nail on the head about the hills turning, I know you said gray, and I was thinking of my hair color, but you were talking about brown. But interestingly enough, there is a brand-new water supply conditions report from Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, which just talks about statewide snowpack and what's going on statewide. So I'll give that to Jeffrey, and perhaps you can make a copy of it for the council members, Jeffrey, if you wouldn't mind. We had a city council special meeting on that same day, April 18, so that was busy. On April 22, we had the Caltrans-VCTC scoping meeting on the Highway 101 improvements. Great attendance. I won't reiterate, I won't repeat what Sean had to say, except that I want to remind people that the deadline for, you can see this on the city's website, and the deadline for written comments on the alternatives that VCTC is looking at is May 6. So if anybody's watching this and wants to comment on what those alternative, on their view, on the alternatives that are being considered for scoping for the environmental documents, they will be able to, they need to do that by May 6. And Jeffrey, I'm going to give you copies of what was passed out there to provide to council members in case they don't already have it. Yesterday, April 23, we had the Senior Center, Community Center Workshop, number one. The follow-up workshop on that, I wrote it down based on, is actually June 6. And that would involve site planning plus park aspects. So if anybody is out there and wants to put it on their calendar, that's the next, the next meeting. Today, two items before the council meeting. One was a breakfast hosted by the Camarillo Healthcare District. And the discussion, which was a tough discussion, but it was a discussion on human trafficking. Very, you know, heartrending emotional subject to hear about, but a very worthwhile program. And I really want to commend the healthcare district for sponsoring that. And then we had a, I had a finance committee meeting today for Clean Power Alliance, and we're in the middle of the 2019-2020 budget. And there's a lot there. And we're dealing with numbers that are very, very large numbers. So there's a challenge there. And then this council meeting. I want to talk about three issues, if I can. First, on the senior and community recreation facility, one of the items that was mentioned last night is that the cost or operational elements information is anticipated, notice I say anticipated and qualify this, is anticipated to be available in July. There was a discussion that the prior council had on the city's financial contribution to this project. And I remember that discussion well.
[laughing]
That's all, that's all I'm going to say. I remember that discussion very well. And on reflection, I think we need to start using this time between now and July, or whenever that, whenever the cost parameters on this, on Plan 2 are coming out, to start having another discussion about what the city can do financially to support the project and to bring this project to fruition. You know that I feel strongly, personally, without being disqualified or biased, that I believe in this project. And I am very happy to see that the city and the Recreation Park District are moving forward together. And I, my view personally is that, to a large extent, both entities are serving the same constituency. We don't have the numbers yet, but we know they're going to be substantial. The, the Plan 2 cost was estimated to be somewhere around 30 million. And that was just, you know, that was a really rough cost. And that's going to be refined substantially during this, during this pre-design phase of the project. But let's just assume, for sake of discussion, that it, what the, the cost, the capital cost of this project would be 75% of that, or 22.5 million if my math is right this time of night, which, who knows? That number is substantially beyond what the, what the council offered to contribute in cash and what PV Wreckin' Park District, I'm aware, can contribute. And, and I get that. And, and we have to be, the city council has to be mindful of the money that it's putting in, et cetera. And we have to do this in a, in a, in a fiscally prudent manner. In my view, there is going to be need to be, there's going to be a real need to incur debt, to have this project go forward. And so, how do you get there? I would like to request that staff prepare and agendize a report to the council that, a report that details what financial options or alternatives we ought to be thinking about in the context of this report. And I don't think it's too early for that. Specifically, I would request an analysis of a formation between the city and the Recreation and Park District of a joint powers authority for the establishment of a public financing authority under the government code, and specifically Section 6546 of the government code. And in addition to that, any other joint financing instruments that would, one approach would be to apportion the debt incurred by the two entities or by the joint powers authority itself. But you would be apportioning the respective debt burdens in an appropriate way, and I'm not going to go into it beyond that, but to talk about that. And then there are other approaches as well that I've heard, including a potential sales tax, or a stream which is dedicated to the project. My view is ultimately, you know, the city and the district are going to move forward together. And I think the city is going to contribute cash and need to participate in the financing. So there is precedent for JPAs issuing revenue bonds. I don't know that a revenue bond is appropriate in this instance. Not sure that's the appropriate bond instrument here. Have to think about that. There may be other mechanisms, and we can talk to a financial analyst. Anyway, I think we should start thinking about that now. And I would request staff, assume if there is agreement on the part of the council to do that, to come up with a, a report that we could start discussing. The second thing is, because Commander Murray is here, I'm, I'm going to say that I was driving with, certainly within the speed limit on Upland, going west on Upland from Santa Rosa. But, you know, the more I think about, you know, Sean talked about the, you know, basically the 101 improvement project being from the 23 to the 33, you know, moving east to west. I'm beginning to think of the, of the streets from Upland and Santa Rosa, where you turn off Santa Rosa, you're coming west on Santa Rosa, you turn off on Upland to go north, and you go west on Las Poses all the way through Springville. I'm starting to call that my alternative 101.
I call it the foothill freeway.
And it's, yeah. And we can give it all kinds of, and it's nothing new. I mean, it's been going on for some time. But, and seriously, I view that holistically as a corridor. So my question to staff is, and the question I'm raising is, when was the last time the city, I would like to know when the last time was that the city traffic department did an analysis of this corridor from a holistic standpoint, including accident rates, speed limits, recommendations for improvements, short-term and long-term view. And the reason I made the, I didn't want to make a declaration, an admission against interest, I was going speed limit, but of course, you know, the cars were.
Nobody else was.
Really going fast past me on Upland. And, you know, to a certain extent, that's a law enforcement issue. a law enforcement issue and an enforcement-type issue, but it's pervasive at this point. And I'm also mindful that we've received emails on what's going on at Springville and, and the lack of, 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 or the still pending traffic light issues and so on. But, and I know that those are going to come with time, but I would like to request a review of that. And then finally, sorry, third substantive issue tonight, I would like to know from the city manager. I think, you know, in light of the discussion we had tonight on districting, I think that we need to start working toward, and I think there's agreement on this, policies and procedures for council governance in the transition from at-large to districts. And I think there's agreement that that is a goal, in goal-setting, that that would be addressed. I wanted to ask the city manager, is there any idea when the timing of that would be, when we would start working toward those, toward development of those kinds of procedures?
Yes, I'm looking at bringing that forward in the fall, after the August break.
Okay, all right. And sorry, that concludes my lengthy comments.
Ms. Craven, anything tonight?
Oh, I have a lot of meetings I attended. On the 11th, I attended the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Liaison Committee with Mr. Tremble. And that evening, I attended an Airport Authority meeting. On the 17th, I attended Mr. Mean's Convention Center and Hotels groundbreaking. On the 18th, I attended a Citizen Appointment Committee meeting. On the 19th, and a special city council meeting, excuse me. On the 19th, I attended a Camrio Ranch Committee meeting. On the 23rd, I attended a Camrio Ranch Ad Hoc Committee meeting. On the 23rd, I attended the Community Workshop for the Senior Center and Community Center last night. It was interesting to me, as I, as we listened to the presentations, that the, it was kind of divided. A lot of the people only wanted one gym. They cut their gyms in half, and it was the tables with the young people primarily that cut the gyms in half. And there was a, there were quite a few senior citizens who made it known they wanted to keep a senior center of some type that wasn't a multipurpose, multi-generational center. So we'll see what comes of it. Then today, I attended the Investment and Finance Committees' meetings. And before I came here then, I attended the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meeting. And I have one other thing. I know I'm harping on these bills about housing, but there was a very good article, and I apologize, a little person who was practicing writing [laughing] wrote over the headline.
Yeah, he does a good job.
But at any rate, there's, it's talking this time about how Palo Alto is a singly, it says, Housing Battles Home Front in Wealthy Palo Alto, a single family is king, but a state bill could rezone most of the city. And these bills that they're having are going to be rezoning our cities, and I know we've been writing letters against them. I think that we have to look at the impact on all of our, our housing and all of these things. And so I'm going to ask the city clerk to, at some point, there isn't a big rush on it, but please send that article out so they can read it. And that's all I have.
Santangelo?
Okay. I, I was also out of town the weekend of April 12th. I was not with Mr. Moshe, but not here, just to clarify. So I missed the events at the library. On April 17th, I was at the Mean Convention Center groundbreaking. April 18th, the Citizen Appointment Committee with Mrs. Craven, and also, oh, we had the special meeting that day as well, at 5:30. And then yesterday, the 23rd, I was also at the Community Workshop for the, the senior slash Community Center. And I too got the distinct feeling that many people wanted it to be purely a senior center. I just, a couple of things I wanted to mention, if everybody didn't know, that the Ventura County Supervisors unanimously supported and adopted the 45-day moratorium on new drilling and redrilling at the oil wells out of the Tar Sands area, which is just southwest of the airport. And I'm mentioning it because it's very close to us, and it does, or supposedly could, you know, I, I don't know the issue that intimately, but there is some concern about the aquifers. So I think it's a good thing that there's a moratorium, at least until they are able to do some more studies. And I also wanted to say Happy Earth Day. I didn't know this, but Earth Day first started in 1970.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't realize it went that far back.
That's a big, big thing.
Because, yeah, I was only two, so I don't remember, but...
And they aired the Love Canal movie that night.
Yeah. And there was no EPA then, so Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day as a way to force the issue, and then that December, the EPA was created. So I just wanted to read what he said, because I think we should honor him. "The ultimate test of a man's conscience may be his willingness to sacrifice something today for future generations whose words of thanks will not be heard." That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, so on April 11th, I did attend the Horizon Baptist Church and wanted to kind of have a little mini State of the City at 6:15, so I attended that. Friday, the 12th, I attended the Educator of the Month at Ace Charter School, and at 5:30 later on, I attended the Library Volunteer Appreciation. And Saturday, I attended, Alma Via had a senior living science, senior science fair, and that was really, really good. We had a little, you know, talked tonight a little bit about the senior citizens, and it's, they would do science projects, and they were there, and you would go and grade them, and they, many of them were still there, and they'd talk to you about the project. One of them did a speed control. He was an ex-engineer, and he had designed a number of years ago this speed control device. So it's really important to, I think, to engage our seniors in this, in this community, because they, they have a lot to give, and they're, it was really great to see them engaged that way. On Tuesday, the 16th, I gave a certificate for the saving lives out at Mission Oaks. Wednesday, the 17th, attended a hotel and convention groundbreaking. And Thursday, I had a VRSD meeting. On the 22nd, I attended the Caltrans Public Hearing Meeting. And they kind of throw millions of dollars around like I throw around, like dollar bills. I mean, it's amazing, the, the projects are getting a lot of zeros. I don't know if anybody's noticed that, but they're getting a lot of zeros on those things. The 23rd, I attended the Pleasant Valley Recreation, Recreation and Park District Community Workshop, and that was a very interesting, learned a lot with that. Tomorrow, if any of you are, are available, the grocery outlet's going to have their ribbon cutting, I think, at 8:55, so it's not too often that a grocery store is able to open up in this economy. So I'll be attending that. I had one request, it's kind of interesting, I didn't think about this too much, but if all of us remember, before they started charging for plastic bags, you used to be able to take your old plastic bags, like Bonds and some others, and recycle them. Well, an individual was talking to me that he's bought all these bags for 10 cents, and now he wants to do something with them. So is there any recycling opportunities that you can bring those bags and get those recycled? So I said, well...
Why doesn't he reuse them?
Well, he's got about 500 of them. He keeps forgetting his. Well, he keeps forgetting his in the car, and he goes there and buys them. So he's got all these plastic bags, and he wants to know if he can recycle them. So anyhow, I don't know if we could look at...
You're on the VRSD board.
Well, I know, but I don't, I didn't have an answer for him, and I thought, well, maybe I'd ask staff if there's any recycling opportunities for any of the plastic bags around.
They do have collections in grocery stores, but there's no compensation.
That would be okay. Can he bring them to a grocery store and...
Yes, they have collections that, they take plastic.
They still, okay, because I didn't, they, okay, maybe, maybe, can you give maybe a list of maybe the Camrio locations that I might be able to...
Sure, we'll, we'll get that.
Okay, great. And I think that's it. I think that's all I have. So let's see, we've got a continuation of a meeting, we've got a, one, we didn't get to one of the sessions in the...
We have one study session.
One study, and we have a closed session. Okay. Would you please announce the closed session, Counselor?
Yes, I will. This is a closed session. It's a conference with real property negotiator. The authority is Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is the Camrio Ranch. The agency negotiators are listed in the agenda. Negotiating parties include the Camrio Ranch Foundation. Under negotiation are lease, price, and terms of payment.
Will there be any announcements after the closed session?
None are expected.
So am I able to close this meeting then? Okay, with that, I will adjourn to a closed session.
No, recess.
Recession to a closed session. Thank you.